Good morning Wichita and welcome to all of you here to City Hall. We'll call the meeting to order. With us this morning is Reverend Ben Staley of Chapel Hill United Methodist Church to provide our invocation. Following that invocation, we ask that you also stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray together. Oh Lord, we are grateful for the days of celebration with our river fest. It went well and was safe. And we're grateful for all that we have to celebrate. These housing developments and new businesses. But we also pray for the poor and those who are unemployed. We're glad to see our people caring for one another. Programs to feed the hungry and housing for the homeless. And a growing concern for social justice. But we also pray for those who are lonely, who feel hopeless and lost. We need your wisdom and your compassion, your guidance to help our community grow and to go forward in ways that are in keeping with your values and your plan for our city. We pray this for our great mayor and city council members and for us all. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, where we stand under God, indivisible, with truth and justice for all.
Thank you Reverend Staley. Mr. Clerk, can you please call the first item?
Approve the minutes of regular meeting June 3rd, 2025.
Council members, any changes? I see none. I will move to approve the minutes of the regular meeting for June 3rd, 2025.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, can you please open the roll? Just in time. Motion passes seven zero. Mr. Clerk, please call the next item.
Awards and proclamations. The award this week is a service award for Larry W. Martin Jr.
May please ask Larry Martin and his family along with Public Works and Utilities Director Gary Jansen to come forward at this time.
Good morning.
This is a special recognition to one of our 3,000 employees at the city of Wichita. This individual has served the city of Wichita and its residents for 42 years. This recognition states distinguished service citation awarded to Larry W. Martin Jr. Presented in recognition of dedicated and meritorious service rendered to the community and citizens of the city of Wichita, Kansas. In his 42 years and six months of service, Mr. Martin has served as an engineering aide I and is retiring as an engineering aide II. Congratulations Larry W. Martin Jr. Public Works and Utilities Director Gary Jansen has a few words.
Thank you Mayor and appreciate the opportunity to say a few words. I've known Larry since the very first day I started work with the city of Wichita and you know, it's always amazed me, this organization in particular and especially our department, to see so many people like Larry who have literally spent their, most of their lives dedicated to service to the community, to the organization. And Larry's certainly done that. When he, not to make you feel too old Larry, but I started, I've got 30 years in. When I started here Larry had already been with the city for almost 15 years. So I didn't realize that at the time, but thank you so much Larry for all you've done. I have never met a single person in, through the course of what we do, what our department does, and particularly what Larry did with our construction engineering group, spending time primarily on a survey crew. You see a lot of people, a lot of folks in the public deal with contractors, design consultants, really out there every single day representing the organization. Never met a single person had anything bad to say about Larry, always has a smile on his face, always a positive attitude. Larry's been through a lot of things over the years, but he's really been an inspiration for a lot of people. And I heard that at his retirement party when we were at the central maintenance facility. But he's brought so much to us, we're definitely going to miss him. The time that Larry has spent on a construction survey crew, it's, a lot of people wouldn't know even what that was or what they do, but there's so much that happens with public infrastructure getting built around the community every single day. And those guys, especially Larry, are our last line of defense to make sure that everything gets done the right way, gets put in the right place, gets built to specifications. And he's done such a wonderful job for us over all that time and being a critical part of it. I just can't say enough about, about everything he's done for us and we're certainly going to miss having him around. I, I could go on and on saying so many wonderful things about Larry. I do want to mention, because I'd be remiss if I don't say it one last time, Larry has one significant character flaw and that he's a Dallas Cowboys fan. So I wanted to get that in one last time. I'm surprised he's not wearing a Cowboys jersey today, but Larry, thank you so much for what you've done. And I don't know if you have anything you want to say or not.
Good morning. I just want to say thank God for allowing me to be here today. I want to thank my dad, my nieces and nephews and my daughter for being here, being my support. Cause if it hadn't been for God, I wouldn't be here. Thank you again.
Again, thank you very much Larry Martin and his family for coming here today for the special award. Mr. Clerk, can you please call the next item?
Public agenda. The public agenda allows for up to five speakers to have five minutes each to address the council. No action will be taken relative to items on the public agenda, other than referral to the city manager for information as necessary. Speakers will please state their name and address for the record. A time clock will display the speakers remaining time to speak. Order and rules of decorum will be observed. The first speaker is Arthur Stokes, Black Mold.
Good morning everybody, Mayor Wu, city council members. I'm Arthur Stokes Jr. And I preside at 2614 South Topeka Apartment 202. And my concern is with Black Mold, not just now in the city. We're talking about your whole state of Kansas, residents, you know, anybody that pays taxes can be a victim to this. And this morning, I don't know why, I don't really, you know, feel like doing a lot of talking. First of all, I want to go to like a 30 second moment of silence for sliding the family stone, Sylvester Stewart. I come up in the seventies and he was one of my favorite seventies stars when I was at Osceola Middle School. This morning, I'm going to do it on a topic and I want to look at some of the flaws in the system. So I wanted to use this story from the Titanic and I found it in Reader's Digest. It's called "The Titanic's Final Secret: Beneath the Great Ship's Rich Trembling Lays a Fatal Flaw." It says, and this was in 95, this issue. It says that late August in Canada Department of Defense lab in Halifax, I held in my hand a pie piece sized piece of the ship's hull plugged from 12,612 feet under the sea. Now, a small team of researchers was about to cut off a section and smash it. The results to me and hope would help solve an 80-year-old mystery. Exactly what happened to the Titanic that sent her to the bottom of the ocean on her maiden voyage. The Titanic, nearly 900 feet long, more than 46,000 tons, was the ultimate intern of the century ship design. First-class suites rates ran $50,000 in today's dollars. When she sailed from Southampton, England, from New York's, to, for New York City with stops in France and Ireland, her most, more than 2,000 passengers included the cream of the industry society, men such as John Jacobs Astor, Isadora Stratus, and founder Macy's Thomas Andrews, the ship owns designer. Built with compartments that could be easily sealed off, the Titanic was supposed to be virtually unsinkable. If the hull was punctured, only the ruptured compartment would float. The builders figured that in the worst case, which two or three compartments flooded, the Titanic would take from two to three days to sink. Plenty of time for nearly ship help. On that April evening in 1912 at about 7:30, the Titanic's wireless operator held a message from the streaming, stream of Californian, which was in the facility. The large bird five miles southward of us. It was one of several ice warnings and Titanic received that date. But the ship continued to rush through the darkness, high in the darkness. I'm gonna stop right there. I'm gonna have to, you know, to use this as an example because we're trying to set a gold standard. I mean, the state already don't have laws to protect me and that, that includes we, us, you know, all of us. So that's why I try, you know, try and like my mind kept coming to this and I can't, I can't really rush through this, there's so much involved in it. And it really covers flaws, you know? Our system is flaws. Thank you this morning.
Thank you Mr. Stokes. Councilmember Ho Heisel.
Thank you Mayor. Uh, thank you Mr. Stokes for being an advocate for change, a lot of the things that we do need to change. Last or two weeks ago, we did have the workshop on some proposed ordinance changes. I, please go back and check out that workshop and share.
I'll get there.
Your thoughts with us? Okay, yeah, and we still have some work to do with the state to try and make sure that we can get in and do more inspections, but I think we're on the right track to doing as, the best that we can do as a city.
See, it's not just the inspections because you can go in a place and inspect it, but sort of like what's happening here, it's so much things happen behind an inspection. Okay? My house that I was living in flooded from the neighbor's toilet up, up. I come in about 11:30 one morning and the light fixture had water in it. And that's where everything starts. Everything doesn't start because you come in there and everything looks all hunky-dory. It, it don't work like that. I'm, I'm sorry. But they didn't really prepare that situation. They didn't, they didn't, you know, they just scammed over it. See, and you know, and that was just one of the, that's, that wasn't even a major problem with that complex. They didn't even have a custodian that did things on a regular basis. They was borrowing Peter to pay Paul. They was borrowing custodians from other realtors, other properties. So you can inspect all you want and you have to listen at that person telling you, hey, it didn't all start right then. And then I started seeing signs of everything going wrong and I called everywhere around here and I had broken arrow. In war, broken arrow means we don't have a plan. All hell broke loose.
Yes sir. Um, like I said, check out the workshop, share, share your thoughts with us.
I'm gonna get into some workshops with you guys. I, I promise y'all, I missed that one.
Alright, thank you sir.
Alright. God bless day.
Council, council member Johnson.
Thanks Mayor. Mr. Stokes, just real quick, in addition to reviewing the workshop, this item is actually going to every district advisory board as well.
Oh, this is gonna be a good one.
This month and next month. So also joining that conversation, I think you live in District 3 if I, if my map is right. So the District 3 District Advisory Board, definitely attend that. You can give input, not only hear what we're talking about doing, but also give input. And it goes a little further than inspections. We're actually looking at adopting the International Property Maintenance Code, which means that it give us a little more ability to address some of the issues that you're talking about. And we've seen some of those same terrible situations.
It's a lot y'all, this, this, this is overwhelming. I mean, it's caused me, y'all don't want to really know for, round for round, book for book. It's, it's, it's really eating into my lunch, but you know, I'm gonna try to make the best out of it.
That, that's.
I'm gonna give y'all a shot.
July 2nd.
July 2nd.
At the Water Center at Herman Hill Park at 6:30 is our district advisory board. I will.
Okay. Appreciate y'all.
Mr. Clerk, can you please call the next individual?
Jeanette Peterson, experience with the Animal Advisory Board.
Jeanette Peterson, 3522 North Lake Ridge Court. Several months ago, I became concerned with the animal shelter and negative opinions of WPD since they are responsible for animal programs. As I researched the issue, I became aware of the Animal Advisory Board and attended my first board meeting. Unfortunately, my observations there left me feeling that the citizens' concerns were not taken seriously or not welcomed. As an avid supporter of the law enforcement and a proud mother of a soon-to-be officer my, of my own, I have always defended and advocated for them to receive our respect and admiration. This is why I was surprised and caught off guard the other day when seeing officers walk into a restaurant brought a much different reaction to my mind. I realized that my opinions of these public servants had been negatively influenced by the things I had learned about the shelter, how it had operated and our leadership's reaction to those that are advocating for positive changes. In today's environment, law enforcement fighting uphill battles with public opinion and I found many people were feeling the same as me. So even though my experience had shown that I had been a, that it can be a hostile environment, I decided to speak at the May 21st Animal Advocacy Board meeting. My hope was that citizens in the board could work together to come up with ideas on how to make changes that would better not only the treatment of animals, but citizens' views of the shelter and WPD. As I began my remarks, I made it clear that I wanted to share the opinions and feedback I was receiving from both online postings as well as those I had been given directly and that I had a tour scheduled with the shelter later on in the week. So that I could better understand the challenges that face each day. Upon concluding my remarks, Nancy, followed by Ellen, began to verbally attack that went on for several minutes and until George finally broke up the comments with a lighthearted comment that calmed them down. I was completely humiliated, embarrassed and in tears and found myself wondering why I even bothered trying to be a part of an interaction between our leadership and the citizens you represent. Fortunately, I received a lot of support from others that were equally shocked at the events of that meeting. And as badly as that went, I decided to continue to try and advocate for change. This is why I've come here today. I understand the difficult task given to those that run the shelter and there are difficult decisions that must be made every day. But I have also recently taken the time to visit shelters in other communities where the same challenges exist, but are often tempered by the active participation of concerned citizens and advocacy groups. Our shelter has a higher euthanization rate hidden by our calculation methods. Our animals have no blankets, no toys and no opportunity to be taken out of the cages or for walks or taken outside. In many cases, I hear the words neglect and abuse used to describe the conditions. Even people outside of Wichita area have shared negative comments about our statistics and what they have heard and experienced. Occasionally, I do not, I do hear positive feedback, but those are few and far between. With the treatment of animals in the shelter and the policies that drives these decisions, the confidence in our leadership and our enforcement agencies is reduced as the number of happy people, as the number of unhappy people grows daily. I have noticed recent events, meetings where shelter animals have been brought in to bring attention to them, which is great and it may help save a few of the lives. But the citizens are requesting for the needed long-term changes at the shelter and that the promises that have been made, to be kept. We want to be able to have pride in our shelter and how the animals are treated and in the organization that runs them. These issues and others related to them have caused people to move out of Wichita and the growing sentiment is continuing to affect how our leaders are viewed. I ask you to please consider these things and to take more seriously the concerns and viewpoints of those that make the effort to come to any of your meetings. The boards were set up for the citizens to have a way to voice their concerns to you as our leadership. And these messages, if these messages are not getting back to you, I ask you consider changes to the board. These are the lines of the communication that tie you, elected officials, to the people you represent. Wichita is a good city filled with good people that want to have pride in where they call home, but that is only possible when they are allowed to become a part of the process and can see the efforts that are, efforts they make reflected in the actions of our leaders. Thanks.
Thank you Ms. Peterson. I will start off by asking Assistant City Manager Dante Martin to help address a couple of the concerns regarding the Wichita Animal Shelter, which is under the leadership of Wichita Police. Can you address just a couple of things regarding some of the changes that have occurred in the last six months?
Good morning Mayor Wu, members of city council. Thank you for your question. Unable to provide details as to the changes of what have occurred over the past six months and I appreciate the concerns you've expressed during the public agenda today. I've taken a few notes and intend to follow up with Chief Sullivan as well as Captain Purcell. I know that there have been staffing changes at the shelter. We've seen a campaign, not only the animals that are brought in for the mayor's briefing on Thursday, but a Facebook campaign to help facilitate adoptions at the, increase adoption rate at the shelter. As for more details as to what's happened at the shelter, maybe you and I could have a conversation following this meeting and I can connect you with Captain Purcell to talk in detail.
I can't stay after this meeting, but I can email you and maybe we can get together.
I have your information, I'll email you.
Okay. Email me and yeah, I would love to sit down and talk about that.
Thank you.
And Ms. Peterson, thank you for addressing. I have a weekly Thursday mayor's briefing and it just started about two, three months ago where we started bringing in animals that have not been reclaimed by their owners that then are up for adoption to be featured each week so people can adopt these animals. So that started just recently in the last three months. In addition to, I did tour the animal shelter of a couple of months ago also with the new staffing changes. And I know that under the leadership of the shelter manager Emily, she has been trying to make a lot of changes that have been, not only to interact with community, but also to take care of the animals under the care of the shelter itself. So I am hoping that Assistant City Manager Dante will connect with you. Were you able to do the tour that you mentioned? You said you had a tour scheduled at the shelter.
Yes. I took a two and a half hour tour and spent two and a half hours with Emily. And we went through it all and I took a tour and that's when I noticed that, and her and I even talked about the fact that, you know, the animals are staring at a wall, they're not, they have no enrichment, they have no toys, no blankets. And I understand her, there are reasons why that, that is as far as the blankets go. But you know, having maybe a volunteer program that has been promised, you know, where volunteers can come in and take these dogs, just even outside, walk around the parking lot is better than sitting in a kennel from the time they come in until the time they're euthanized and die. You know, we treat criminals better than that. And so just, yes, but her and I did have a two and a half hour meeting, her and I, she is more than willing for me to message her with ideas and, and is open to ideas. It just, it was more the Animal Advisory Board and the experience that I had there. No citizen should ever go to a board that is supposed to be for the citizens and have that experience.
Thank you for sharing your experience at the Animal Advisory Board. And I apologize that individuals, again, you felt that you were being disrespected. So I'd like to know from Assistant City Manager, can we all, I think there are more than 20 boards that the city of Wichita has available, can, can we send out a mass email about decorum and matter of respect at these advisory boards? They are an extension of who we are as council members on this council, as mayor as well. If we can just have a nice reminder to all advisory boards about a matter of respect and also just what the rules are in regards to when public wants to come to these advisory boards, they're always welcome. We want individuals, thank you again for taking the time to attend an advisory board meeting, but the idea is we want to hear from residents and advisory board members then are supposed to take that feedback and then share it with us. So again, thank you for attending your advisory meeting, but we will send out, or Assistant City Manager and his staff will send out a reminder about decorum and respect.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ballard.
Thank you Mayor. Purcell or Emily, I'm not sure who would have the proper answers for these. I just wanted to know if you could address the staffing question? I know that we put more kennel techs in the budget. So if we could just address where we are with that and also if we could address the kennel space.
Is that to me?
No, sorry. Thank you for being here ma'am.
Yeah, so we, the council, I do believe it was last budget cycle that they changed our
our kennel techs from for part-time to for full-time. We have yet to be able to- oh, I'm sorry. Is this better?
Yes.
Do I need to repeat myself?
No.
Okay. We have yet to be able to fill all four of those. However, I do be- I do hope to be able to fill them in the next couple of weeks. We've had some great interviews. That'll make a really big difference for us in the ability and number of people we can care for them. As far as kennel space, it is great. When I was there this morning, we had about 152 cats and I think it was 148 dogs, and as you guys may know, that changes by the hour, both in animals leaving and animals coming in. That does put us pretty much at max capacity, so I have fewer dog kennels open than I have the number of average dogs coming in on a daily basis, and significantly fewer cat kennels. I only have two available cat kennels and an average of about, I think I was at 19 cats coming in per day. And so we are working really hard, day and night, with our rescue partners, with the adoption partners, trying to get animals back to the owners, anything we can do so that we can find positive placement for the animals. But the summer months, we knew were going to be difficult, and we're just, we've got to get through it.
What is your average intake of dogs right now per day?
Daily-ish.
Ish.
Yes, no, I know you're testing me. I think it was 14.
Okay.
If I'm off a number or two, it just changes daily, so, yeah.
My only other question, thank you so much for that, just for some clarification. Is there anything that we can do or ask the community to do for toys or blankets or any of the things that she suggested? I don't know if there's like rules, what we can and can't do, but what can we do to try to help in that way?
Absolutely. We have been requesting both treats and toys for cats and dogs, and so those would be super helpful. Those are not a part of our budget right now, and we haven't received very many, but what, anything that, it needs to be dishwasher safe, something that they can't shred apart because of the drainage system and the kennels, that makes things that are full of fluff difficult on our systems. So again, anything dishwasher safe, cats or dogs, and treats would be great because then as our coworkers are feeding and walking through the kennels daily, they can try to provide some interaction with the animals.
And just any treats is fine?
Yeah. And honestly, the softer and the smellier, the happier they are.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Glasscock.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Peterson, thank you for being here. Thank you for coming and being an involved citizen. It's very tough to get people that want to care, and so I can't speak to what happened at the board meeting, but I know that all of our board members are also volunteers. People are passionate. I know they care as well. I know you care, and sometimes when passions run high, people maybe communicate in different ways. But I hope that you feel heard from this bench as well and got some of the answers to your questions today, and thank you for being an involved citizen, because it's difficult to get people involved in the process.
Yeah, and can I just go back to the treats thing? One of the confusions is, as a citizen, as a public member, there is a lot of confusion about the difference between the Wichita Animal Shelter and the Kansas Humane Society. So I know recently the Kansas Humane Society asked for treats, and I can guarantee you, a lot of the community thought when they were giving those treats to the Kansas Humane Society, they were also going to the Wichita Animal Shelter. Because I've lived here 24 years, and it wasn't until I started this two months ago, I realized those were not even the same two businesses. So there is a lot of confusion there that those treats were not given to the Wichita Animal Shelter. So when the Wichita Animal Shelter is asking for things, people, I mean, I've talked to numerous of peoples and like, "Oh, I drop step off at the Humane Society all the time." That's not the Wichita Animal Shelter. So there's a lot of confusion. That was one of the reasons why I went to the board meeting, is because there's this big confusion that normal citizens that are not in rescue don't understand and don't know.
Emily, can you just address that so that folks who are tuning in right now, so they do understand that there is two separate entities despite a campus that is shared?
Absolutely. And that it's a, that's a common item of confusion, as we have almost identical buildings that are on the same campus together, and it is a bit more difficult. We are very thankful for our partner, the Kansas Humane Society, and they do hold animals a bit, quite a bit longer than us, and so we don't want to deter, of course, any treats or support they do. As a nonprofit, they are dependent on all kinds of donations, in-kind and monetary. And animals stay there for months at a time versus a few days at a time, such as our shelter. But yes, they, as citizens, can see when they walk into our pavilion underneath the, underneath the pavilion on the sidewalk, there are two facilities, one's to the left, which says Wichita Animal Services, and then one is to the right, which says Kansas Humane Society, and donations can be dropped at both. We don't typically share those types of contributions, so if they can make sure that they head to the left, that will donate to the Wichita Animal Shelter. The Kansas Humane Society does take the majority of our animals, so they will get your treats one way or the other.
Can you just also address the shelter itself? When you go to the left, these are animals that are stray animals, animals that have been dropped off. Can you address the shelter piece versus?
Oh, yes.
Wichita, sorry, Kansas Humane Society?
Yeah. No problem. So yes, the design of the partnership was so that we could help more animals and get them saved, so we minimized what the two organizations did and had them focus on those. So Wichita Animal Services, we are animal control, which means enforcing ordinances and taking in stray and lost and found pets. So that can be rather, whether an animal is running at large or found, one of our animal control officers can come out and pick that up, and that will come into Wichita Animal Services, or if you have found a lost or stray animal, you can bring that to us at Wichita Animal Services. They then stay there for their legal stray hold period, which is three business days, and that's why we really encourage citizens to look. We do have a revised webpage on 24 Pet Connect, which you can find on our website and on our Facebook, which will show you all of the animals within that shelter. After those three business days, then we reach out to one of our adoption partners, like the Kansas Humane Society, where the animals will be transferred over for adoption. If the Kansas Humane Society is full, or some of our rescue partners can take them, they also go out to different rescue partners in our community and out of state.
Thank you very much, Emily. Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mary, or Mayor, I'm sorry. And thank you, Jeanette, for showing up today. We need people like you to constantly speak up about things that are going on in our society, so please don't let any negative experience deter you from continuing to advocate for your passions here. And just one other point, I do regularly communicate with my animal advisory member, so I just wanted to put that out there, maybe a little too much even, so.
I was thankful that he made the comment and got things under control, because I don't know how long things would have gone on had he not kind of made a light comment to kind of make them step back and realize that the way they were going was not appropriate.
Well, I'm glad to hear that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson, and thank you, Emily. And again, also thank you to your son, who's going to join the police department. Mr. Clerk, can you please call the next individual?
Lauren Hirsch, Wichita Public Library System. Good news, challenges, and budget considerations.
Good morning. Thank you. All right. I'm Lauren Hirsch at 3823 East Funston. I've lived in Wichita my whole life, which turns out to be one year less than Larry W. Martin Jr. has been employed for City Public Works. I'm a volunteer on the Library Board of Directors, currently serving as Chair. I live in District 3, right near our newest library branch named after Dr. Ronald W. Walters, a Wichitaan known for his significant work in civil rights and world politics. I believe Wichita can be one of the country's great cities. I'm here to share good news and an invitation to shift thinking. In 2017, Wichita adopted a plan to address what's needed to be increasingly employed, educated, safe, and connected. Wichita looked at different geographical areas of the city and the more prominent needs of each of those specific locales, then designed a smart, people-focused plan for how the Wichita libraries can directly address those needs. I'm excited to share with you the good news that I hope you will share abundantly with your constituents. The commitment is coming to fruition by the end of this summer with the completion of all branch remodels. Wichita has a set, a fresh set of libraries to be proud of, and they are responsive to exactly what's been identified to help economic resilience, employability, connected families, increased reading and digital literacy, access to services and safety, and simply a healthy lifestyle and happiness. Libraries are a bright spot for this city, exactly what you can proudly promote to your constituents as evidence of the city's efforts. Please invite them to explore the excellent programming and learn about all the benefits that will save them money and enhance their lives. One aspect of that plan was not kept, however. The plan adopted by council included a recognition from the city that more staffing would be necessary to safely run these libraries and deliver that targeted programming. These new exciting spaces and materials are practically useless without staff who are the pivotal piece turning that city's investment to real actual value. People, our staff, are truly what deliver the value for families, people in need, people applying for jobs, learning to navigate a digital world, and now more students with library cards than ever before. The rest of the branch plan came together. It's amazing. Everything is going well and looking good, and still Wichita libraries are funded at a lower level than other cities like ours. I absolutely respect the complex challenge of running my favorite city. I ask that the library cuts proposed recently absolutely not go through. There are no more meaningful efficiencies or offset revenues to find. The 5% cut, as has been suggested, will effectively make libraries further understaffed, meaning less physically safe. To illustrate the impact, it could look like a 70% reduction in our collection resources, amounting to 30,000 books. A 5% budgetary cut to this system would realistically look like reducing the footprint of our branches, meaning two fewer branches, including the one right by my home, named after Ronald W. Walters. It's the city's role to provide an adequate basis of reliable operational funding. I do look forward to collaboration with you and other library affiliates on how we can partner to bring long-term consistency to the budget. If you're considering adding any staff members at all, anywhere in the city budget, I hope you'll match it by adding the promised support that was already made to your library system and certainly not cutting that budget. I ask that you instead consider how to leverage more value from the public investment that's already been made and how the libraries meaningfully impact our other important priorities in the city, like public trust, personal and civic empowerment, homelessness, safety, and city vibrancy. We have data on all of these, how libraries support each of those things, and it makes sense. It's proven that libraries directly reduce crime, that they're a positive prevention strategy. Let's think holistically now about how improving people's opportunity and access actually raises their capability for success but also proactively prevents homelessness and critical health issues, also joblessness. I'm proud of the steadfast vision and creativity staff have applied. As a Wichita taxpayer, I'm satisfied with their approach to using funding as meaningfully as possible and always looking to serve more people and better. Our libraries can be the hub of partnership, leading collaborative efforts toward building literacy, which is a proven anchor for healthy individuals, families, capable workforce, and economic stability. According to the Citizen Survey, the libraries are the most positively regarded and trusted aspect of the city. Rather than deflate all that momentum, the very moment that we should be celebrating what we've created over the last several years, let's instead use this positive energy to activate more Wichitaans to receive that benefit and use the services that we've already invested in. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hirsch. Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. Man, I got the best board representatives, I believe, at, on, I'll put them up against anybody, so I appreciate you coming up and advocating, and it's not falling on deaf ears. There is a lot going on as far as the budget, trying to work it out, but safety is definitely a concern for the librarians and the people there, and it is an investment. Councilmember Tuttle often talks about third-grade literacy being the most important indicator of a child's, whether they succeed in life or not. So a lot of moving parts. Please keep us, keep us informed on your thoughts and the library board's thoughts, and we'll keep working the budget and see, do the best we can to protect the services that we possibly can.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Guess it is District 3 day. I agree with everything you said and appreciate your advocacy. We had a wonderful presentation, I think that was last year, from Dante, working with all of our directors, looking at crime prevention and what we could do and what we can invest in to help that, and library is a big part of that. I agree, I'm supportive of working with my colleagues to see what we can do to hopefully not have that cut. I think the investment in libraries is a real investment in our city and our future, and just again, thinking about my own experience growing up, I used to love going to the library and just sitting there and having an opportunity to learn and library staff helping me, and like you said, if we, if we cut those folks, it just makes it not as good and we don't follow through with the word that we gave years ago. So I am supportive of that. I appreciate your advocacy, and I'm hopeful that we won't have to make those cuts and that we can actually make more of an investment in our libraries, because it's necessary.
Councilmember Ballard.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just mimic Councilmember Hoheisel and Johnson's comments. We recently have invested a lot of money to improve and upgrade all of our libraries, and it would be detrimental to have to cut staff after we have made investments and modernized some of the library technologies and, I mean, I've spent a lot of time at the public library, the Menace Library, and probably dating myself because it's not there anymore, but there, the library is incredibly important, and it's incredibly important to everyone. And I just think that we need to try to get creative and during a really difficult time, try to figure out how we can protect our staff so that it's available for our community. So really appreciate you coming and advocating for the library. I think it's important for us to all get the same information as well, so appreciate your time.
Councilmember Glasscock.
Thank you, Mayor Lauren, that you were speaking. Last year when we were looking at proposed cuts from the manager, the one cut that I didn't recommend to this board, that was proposed by the manager, was cuts to the library. There's not a private sector equivalent to the library. It's a public sector amenity that isn't met in the private sector, and so I'm interested as we go in budget conversations, obviously, we're going to have very difficult discussions, and I know all my colleagues are trying to figure out ways that we don't have to have some of these serious conversations, and I think we have to look systemically, how do we do government differently? And so I think all of us would be interested in recommendations from the library board as well. We're seven people. We're not going to solve all the city's problems up here, but I know our community has the answers, and so helping us in this process, especially as budget allocations happen over the next few months, would be critical in making sure that we protect some of the current amenities of the library.
And lastly, I see Director Jamie Nix over there. This is more of a, maybe, a future staff question. I'd like to see data on when the utilizers of the library actually attend or visit the programs. Can we get data on times of day, which branches? That would be helpful in also staffing, and so maybe Jamie has information already. Okay.
I think, just as candor, our door counter technology is from 1983. It counts the number of people, not the times of day, so it's outdated. It's part of a project we have looking forward at some different technology, but I can definitely provide you statistics on how branches are used, from programming to circulation to meeting rooms, et cetera. I'll get that to you soon.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. And just a disclaimer for my Andalu library, until this year, with the extended hours, the library would close at 6:00. So if we look at attendance to justify any investments, attendance may not be high because the library would close at 6:00, people get off work at 5:00, unless kids walked up there. It was utilized during the day by folks looking for jobs and using the library, but it won't, it will not have the attendance numbers as other spaces, so hopefully, just that caveat as we look at investment, it did close at 6:00, it now closes at 8:00 temporarily, so usage will be up, but that is one thing that we would have to consider.
I will add one more point of discussion that would be helpful. I attended Tabernacle Bible Church this past Sunday, and one of the things they mentioned was the idea of having a community center, and I've heard of multiple others near the area. Are there any collaborative efforts that we can have where maybe the library space can be utilized for group? for group meetings or youth activities? So that, again, instead of having one space here, how about utilizing a space that is already available with lights and staffing?
Yep. We have encouraged that. We'll continue to encourage that. We have a lot of public spaces available. One of the concerns or critiques, especially about the Maya Angelou Library, is it is the smallest of the branch libraries. So that meeting room, I think at the time, held 15 or 20. It has expanded. There's a sunroom there. So it's getting there. And we'll continue to encourage partnerships. Jamie's been doing a great job with that and the library board. But that was just one of the critiques from some of the groups, which is it was a little bit smaller. So we're still working on building out partnerships and programs there.
Could I add one thing? I think an interesting piece of data would also be to look at the usage after the moment that we were able to increase a professional library position rather than something like a clerk at two of our branches, including Walters. Because I think you'll see that that does demonstrate that when you make that change, it's actually compared to the same hours, just barely increased. And you can see how that increased the quality of the programming and the usage.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. And to Lauren's point, I was at the library yesterday for a meeting, and there were families outside waiting for it to open. So there's a lot going on there. And it is kind of a hard thing to really quantify with some of the data, but extended hours does help. So I just wanted to bring that up because there were three or four families kind of waiting around for the library to open yesterday. So, all right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, can you please call the next individual? Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Just one more thing I always bring up with the Walters branch. When we opened it, was very excited for that. I still would love to see, working with the family of Dr. Walters and Howard University on some collaborative, maybe sharing some materials there. We had that conversation, and then it kind of got lost when, you know, pandemic and everything. But would love to kind of see that revisited. I think that would be an awesome opportunity for folks to learn about the amazing work of Dr. Walters, who he was, what he stood for. And I know his wife would love that as well because we talked about that when she was here. So just want to always throw that back up.
It looks like we don't have any more scheduled individuals. We have two more spots for individuals who would like to address the council.
Diana Tedlock, and I'm in Maggie's district. Want to touch on a couple of things that Jeanette talked about. If you guys really want to see what happened at the meeting, I would encourage you to watch the video. Those are online now for the animal advisory board. And I would encourage you all to watch the entire section of the public comments. So if you want to see what really took place, I would also, I guess, suggest that you address the problem, not the whole. Some of the individuals that make these meetings contentious, there have been, I have written personal emails on some of the same individuals. I know ethics complaints have been filed on some of those individuals. So it's due to the whole, maybe address the problem. Also, on the donations, as far as the wish list, I know on the Wichita Animal Shelter site, at the very bottom, there's a section that says wishlist. And I brought this up last fall in Animal Advisory Control, but the link doesn't work to it. I mean, it's just an easy fix. I did tell Emily about it just, I think, last week or the week before, we were opening up communications there. But, I mean, it was known and it was stated in an animal advisory board meeting. And that just seems like a pretty simple fix, that it's six, seven months later. The kennel space, I would like to address the maintenance of the kennel space. I know there's some repairs that we've known about needing since November. And now the contractor wants to shut down two hallways at a time. The city, you know, we should be directing how many halls can be closed at a time. We should be directing that work statement. It's summer. It's the busy time of the year. You've got Fourth of July coming. So we need to direct that work, not have the contractor tell us what they want. The next thing I'd like to address is the budget. The police have 40% of the city's budget. And yet, when Chief Sullivan was asked to provide input of reductions to help offset the forecasted deficit in the years 2026 and '27, the best he could come up with was the elimination of the animal control field services and the shelter in its entirety. So responsible leadership would have submitted at a minimum the following tactics and goals with detailed cost-benefit analysis. A volunteer program, promised for years. The WASO occupancy for the last two months has been 40 to 45% of kennels have been empty. We need to get that up to at least the 75% that they talked about for care to capacity. We don't have enough people in the shelter already to do the job. We can't even fill the positions we have. My understanding, there's two animal control positions and two to three kennel tech positions open. What do we need to do to get those filled? Does that need to be a higher rate? What do we need to do to get people in there? Enhance cleaning protocols. Kennel cough isn't rampant in the community. I mean, I think I've heard that Emily had said, you know, they're hoping that they can get better power washers, you know, and one of the benefits or the initiative she talked about was the volunteer program. Talked about getting kennels outside so the animals can get play areas. Training for the officers. The shelter doesn't have enough staff. Yet, one of those tactics was included in the budget discussion. Not one, just a complete defunding of an entire function needed by the community. That's not responsible leadership on any level. No collaborative efforts have been made with the county at this point. So for that to even be put on, let's see, to make any, yeah, there's no betterments at all. There's no tactics. Just a complete elimination. And a responsible city manager, finance department would never have even accepted that as input, as a plausible option to incorporate into any presentation to the city council at that level. If I would have done that when I was at Spirit and Boeing, it would have been shut down at first level management. It would have never got to the executive level. I don't know how that happened. How do you think you can go in and just defund a complete function? It just amazes me that that would even be brought up. But that's it for now.
Any questions? Councilmember Ballard.
Thank you. I'm not sure, Diana, thank you for being here. I'm not sure if this is a question that staff knows or Emily, but can we speak to the contractor's suggestion about closing down two halls?
Yes, that actually wasn't necessarily the contractor's suggestion. Oh, yeah, thank you. That wasn't exactly the contractor's suggestion. We have a time period in which we need to get these repairs completed. And so in order to be able to do that in a manner that, I guess, works with the high populations that we are doing and being able to get the work done within that time period, this is the schedule in which we need to follow because the cure time of the product, the time that it takes to actually cut out the existing caulking and replace the new, put in the epoxy floor, and then when animals can have access back to those kennels, and then the time it takes to physically move the 20 animals from one set of kennels to the others on top of daily operations. The two kennels at a time was the minimum number that we could accomplish and still meet that schedule.
Is there something that we can do or that we could do to try to help? I mean, I feel like every time's a busy time. I know you guys are extremely busy and there's probably never a time that is ideal to do this work. But is there something that, like, temporarily we could do? Or is there anything to do to help? I don't want to have to put down more animals or not take animals or something, you know?
Drastic, right. Yeah. I mean, we don't want to do any of that. It really is just a matter of bad timing and resources that we have available to be able to provide the humane care. Like, somebody was like, well, can you just put up temporary kennels in a room somewhere or something like that? And you really can't do things like that and provide humane care. And so I think that what internally with our existing staff that we have available to us, it's still even a stretch to be able to provide care for all of those animals as it is, especially just with, and not that we can address the volunteer program and the total capacity that she was discussing separately. But we are working with owners that we can't, so we could get dropped, reduce fees, anything we can do to get the animals back to the owners because that's really, these aren't wild animals. These are people's pets. And figuring out how we can get these people's pets back to their owners is going to be the most effective way to be able to save as many lives in this scenario. So staff is authorized to be able to reduce fees in any capacity that we are capable of. Try to, we're trying to contact owners as fast as we can. We're proactively working with our rescue groups and the Kansas Humane Society to try to get those animals that are unlikely to be claimed out the door or with some type of placement. It's just, it's just an intense season for our staff and it's something that's part of our job. I don't, I haven't been able to figure out alternative solutions to be able to meet our requirements.
Well, if you think of something or come up with something, please let us know.
Absolutely. Don't you have suggestions you would like incorporated into the budget, like more staff and things like that? I didn't see any of that coming through to city council. So that's where my concern is. You have the person running the shelter saying, "I need these things." You have her boss coming to you saying, "Let's defund it in its entirety." Complete disconnect, no support at all. I wouldn't want to work for that kind of manager. I wouldn't work for that kind of manager.
Thank you, Emily, and thank you, Ms. Tedlock. Miss, we have one more spot for another individual who would like to speak. I see none. Mr. Clerk, can you please call the next item?
Consent agenda items one through 16.
Are there any items to be pulled from the consent agenda? I see none. I will move to approve.
Mayor.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to pull item 14 and 16.
Any others? I see none. I move to approve the consent agenda without item number 14 and item number 16.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes 7-0. We'll go in numerical order. Agenda, consent agenda item number 14. Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor, actually, for both items. Due to a personal conflict, I have to abstain from voting.
Consent agenda item number 14 is in regards to the Home Program, 2024 Housing Development Loan Program, Wichita Habitat for Humanity, Inc., funding allocation in District Number One. I see no questions from the bench. We will now open it up for public comment. I see none. I'll bring it back to the bench. I move to approve consent agenda item number 14.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes 6-0 with one abstention. Consent agenda item number 16. What council member has stated, I see no further questions from the bench. We will now open it up for public comment. I see none. I'll bring it back to the bench. I move to approve consent agenda item number 16.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes 6-0 with one abstention. Mr. Clerk, please call the next item.
Board of Bids and Contracts dated June 9, 2025.
Morning. Mayor, City Council, Josh Lauber, Department of Finance. The Board of Bids and Contracts convened yesterday, June 9, 2025, for the following items. For engineering, we have the 2025 Outsource Pavement Preservation Program, CIP Concrete Street Repairs, Phase Four, for PPJ Construction Incorporated, awarded within the engineer's estimate of $442,500 from the original bid of $368,781.50. We have the 2025 Outsource Pavement Preservation Program, Joint and Crack Seal, Phase Four, reject all bids. We have the, for purchasing, the structural firefighting boots for Ed M. Feld Equipment Company Incorporated, doing business as Feld Fire, for $72,761.50 estimated. We have the water meter test bench for Municipal Supply Incorporated for $127,492.3. We have the mechanical screening of street sweepings and finished compost for Brooks Landfill, reject all bids. We have the licensed track software annual renewal for Progressive Solutions Incorporated for $68,033.26. We have the engineered wood fiber safety surfacing for various playgrounds for Rocky Mountain Distributors Incorporated for $65,993.57. This is how to become a vendor with the city of Wichita. This is a purchasing calendar of small events with our resource partners that we're hosting or participating in. And these are open public opportunities. And a little bit back to normalcy as we go from five slides to two. I'll be happy to answer your questions.
Thank you, Josh. Questions for staff, beginning with Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. Josh, can we go back to slide six, please?
Sure.
Did we, how many bids did we have for this?
Yes, we did have bids. We did have process, but the issue was a change of scope requiring us to rebid it. So we don't want to complete the bid, us to rebid it. So we don't want to complete the bid, have material changes in the specifications to have a vendor protest risk. So to avoid that entirely, we are going to modify the specifications, retool it, and put it back out for the public opportunity.
Okay, thank you.
Good question.
Josh, same question, but for slide number nine.
Okay. This one, there was an error in the scope. And I want to say, don't quote me on that, but I, but we are putting it back out to rebid it again. There was an issue, I think, and this is the part, don't quote me, please. I think there was an issue with the estimated quantities where our customer, the requesting department, listed the annual usage as the aggregate total of five years instead of one year. So it was very overstated. So we need to put it back out.
Thank you. And then slide number five. In this situation, streets is the second most high priority for this council. Can you talk about this specific item, why the lowest bid was not taken instead?
Sure. This is a great question and can look misleading in our processes. So we did take the lowest bid because the original bid of PPJ was three hundred and sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred and eighty-one dollars and fifty cents, lower than the Prado Construction bid. We utilized that low placement to then negotiate or award them within the engineer's estimate above the original bid by the city engineer requesting this.
Does that mean more street will be repaired?
I'm gonna have to have the city engineer help me with that one.
Good morning, Mayor, City Councilmembers, Paul Gunsmann, Public Works and Utilities for the record. To answer that question, not necessarily. As we get into the blocks, more work may be needed than we had initially anticipated when we did the estimated quantities to be repaired. So that gives us some flexibility to do a little bit more work, still staying within the four hundred and forty-two thousand, five hundred dollar budget.
And remind us, again, this is concrete street repair. Is it in one specific district or in multiple?
This one is probably in multiple districts.
Thank you very much. I see no further questions for staff. This does not get public comment, so I will move to approve the Board of Bids and Contracts dated June nine, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes seven zero. Mr. Clerk, please call the next item.
Petitions for public improvements.
Paul Gunsmann, Public Works and Utilities, for the record, I have one location for your consideration this morning. The signatures on the petitions represent one hundred percent of the improvement districts, and the petition is valid per Kansas statute. Brookfield South Edition, located in District Two, I apologize for the typo. On October eleventh, twenty twenty-two, the City Council approved paving improvements required for a new residential development. The developer has submitted a revised paving petition to move the project financing from acquisition of a privately bid constructed to construction of publicly bid improvements. The budget remains as previously approved, and is recommended that the City Council approve the revised petition, adopt the new resolution, and authorize the necessary signatures.
Thank you, Paul. Can you go back to that slide? It's slide twenty-one, right? It's District Number Two, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. I see no questions for you. Again, this does not get public comments, so I move to approve the petitions for public improvements.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes seven zero. Mr. Clerk, please call the next item.
Public hearing to consider establishing a community improvement district for SoC Corner.
Honorable Mayor, Members of Council, Troy Anderson, Assistant City Manager. So previously, you all approved a resolution setting today as the public hearing to establish this community improvement district. Just a little bit of background on the company, though. Socie Economic Development Group, LLC, or SoC, is the owner of multiple mixed-use buildings located at the subject property on the southwest corner of Lincoln Street and South Broadway. They plan to make investment to redevelop that corner to include some retail office as well as some multifamily space. They have requested the use of establishing a community improvement district to assist in the development and construction of the project. As the one and sole owner of the property, the CID petition is signed by one hundred percent of the landowners. No taxpayer dollars are at risk. The estimated value of the project is about two point six million dollars. The eligible expenses total about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And so the applicant is requesting the use of a CID sales tax, two percent for up to the twenty-two years. As you may recall, either the cost cap will be met or the twenty-two years will be met. Once the cost cap or the twenty-two years is met, then the CID district is retired. Developer will pay all construction costs associated with the project. The city will not use debt for the project. And then the proceeds from the sales tax will then be rebated back to the developer to rebate, to reimburse them for those eligible expenses up to that four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Lot of departments reviewed and approved the ordinance as deformed. It's recommended City Council pull the public hearing, close the public hearing, place the ordinance on first reading, and then authorize the necessary signatures. We do have representatives here from the applicant to answer any questions that you may have, but otherwise I'll stand for questions.
Thank you, Troy. Questions for staff, beginning with Councilmember Glasscock.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a few questions. It talks about the CID project will include parking lot, security improvements, but then the subsequent line says that improvements will just do roof, facade, interior work to renovate the building. So what will be the security improvements?
I will defer to the applicant to tell you a little bit more about the project.
Good morning. Adam Barlow Thompson. Live at eleven twenty-one South Waco, about five blocks from the, where the location is for the CID. We'll have several parts of this that include, include improved lighting on the corner, security system with cameras, and some fencing to, especially for the part that includes residential space, so that folks can get in and out of their spaces and feel safe on that corner, so.
Fewer questions for you, Troy. Looking at the basis for up to twenty-two years for the CID, is that typical? I was more understanding it was twenty years, but it's a twenty-two years for all the CID projects?
Yeah, CID can carry twenty-two years.
Carry up to twenty-two.
Yep. And so most applicants will ask for the twenty-two years, just in the context of depending on how sales tax proceeds come in and how those proceeds are then rebated back. If for whatever reason, sales tax do not realize as may be anticipated, that gives them the entire shot clock, so to speak, to try to recover as much of that, of those eligible reimbursements as possible. But if they come in greater than expected, once they meet those cost caps, then the district could be retired early.
Okay. Two other questions regarding the developers proposed these to be used at Lincoln Park regarding the ten percent of the CID for eligible costs for public improvements. I was trying to scan through the entire document. I just didn't see any, like, contingency that they're used for Lincoln Park. Is there a separate MOU that we have? Or did I miss something in the contractual agreement that these will be used at Lincoln Park?
So as those sales tax proceeds come in, there's a provision, talks about the origination fee. The city will capture the ten percent of those sales taxes as they come in as part of that origination fee, and then the city can allocate those dollars towards the project as described.
And then do we capture in the first ten percent, or is it throughout the entire life of the project, or is it the first forty-five thousand that directly goes towards these improvements? So let's say they don't collect the total, the total four hundred and fifty thousand over the course of twenty-two years. Let's say it's less, so let's say it's three hundred thousand over the course of that. Well, then we're only gonna spend thirty thousand. Is that spent up the upfront or do we have to wait twenty-two years? Explain that project.
The, in most scenarios, we capture just ten percent, right? Until either that cost cap is met and the district is retired, or the twenty-two years and the district's retired. We just capture ten percent of whatever proceeds come in. Now, one of the things we could do is we can always, city can bond upfront for those public improvements and then use proceeds to reimburse ourselves over that period of time, right? Or we've seen in other scenarios whereby the city builds up those proceeds over a period of time and then uses those to pay for some.
That was more my question. We're gonna build up the proceeds over the course of the time. So when do we, are you gonna wait full twenty-two years? So let's say we're at the halfway mark and they're, you know, at two hundred thousand. We implement twenty thousand worth of improvements versus waiting the full twenty-two years. What have we done in other projects that have allowed the full investment of up to forty-five thousand?
So, so we've seen any number of scenarios, right? It depends on the community project that has been identified. At this point in time, we don't even know kind of exactly what those improvements look like, right? And so as we continue to work with the district representative and the community on what those improvements could look like, should like, we'll have to go get cost estimates on what those are. Once we develop a project, right, then we can better ascertain whether or not, again, city wants to bond that upfront. Or it could be a project, we've seen in some scenarios, there was a, a project a couple of years ago, and there was some, some trail connections, trail work that they wanted to do, right? And so we slowly just been putting those monies sort of in an escrow account until such time as the trail gets widened to a certain point. And so we knew that was a sort of a, a future forward-looking project that we could just build up the proceeds until a project identified itself. In this case, we have a project, so most likely we'll just work with our, our finance department, understand the costs, perhaps go out, bond finance to get the project work done, and then use those proceeds as they trickle in.
Well, it could be difficult to bond the project upfront if we don't realize the full four hundred and fifty thousand, because then we'd be at risk for spending more money than CID could theoretically bring in.
And that's where it's just a balancing act of in timing, right? Once we get better cost estimates, we can continue to evaluate the risk of how the project is coming. It might be a year, it might be two year. We can always monitor how the project is coming along before we make that kind of public investment. Yep.
Any further questions for staff? I just have one for the developer and group. The neighboring movement has done a lot of great work around that area. Can you just tell us what the big vision for this area is?
Absolutely. Thank you. And thank you for considering this proposal. We have, are celebrating our tenth year as a nonprofit this week, actually. And for, over that time period, have been working in the neighborhood to connect neighbors on a block-by-block level. And one of the things that we realized is that there is a structural barrier to the community building trust in the vacant properties that are in our community. So in twenty twenty-three, we recruited a group of neighbors. We called them the Property Team. We just started brainstorming about what we could do about these vacant properties, abandoned properties, underutilized properties in the neighborhood. About that time, we had a fire in the neighborhood, and the person who owned the properties across the street from our office put them all up for sale. And we were able to utilize some of our, our most faithful donors to go in and purchase those properties, which are the ones that are in this project. One of the things that we know about our neighborhood is that South Broadway, for generations, has been an issue in Wichita that people said, I wish somebody would do something about that. It took us a while, ten years, to realize, oh, they meant us, we're the ones who need to do something about that. And so this is our effort to reconnect a historical neighborhood to the City of Wichita. Our goal is to link this to downtown. The properties that we are in this, the rental income that will come from these will go into a community fund that will be directed by the neighbors to continue to improve the neighborhood. And we really want to use that South Broadway corridor as a way to reconnect to the economic engine that is downtown Wichita. This is less than a mile to the new health center at the KU and Wichita State Health Center that's being built. So it's not, it's not an outlandish thing to imagine that we could be a part of a neighbor to those, those, those facilities. And that our neighbor, the people who live in the community would be able to direct those funds. We envision our neighborhood as a workforce neighborhood. It's the neighborhood where people who work downtown as maintenance folks, as in the restaurants, those people need a place to live, where, in a place they can be proud of. That's what our neighborhood is going to become. And we want to make this a central hub of the community where people can come and, and be proud of, this is my neighborhood's space. And so we're excited to, to see what happens with that. It's also exciting to me that this is a partnership between public support with, with this CID, a nonprofit. We have representatives here from the Wichita Foundation and the Kansas Health Foundation who are, are helping us with funding, as well as Fidelity Bank, who has been a generous donor and also will hold our loan for this project. And so it's, it's a partnership. I mean, none of this would happen without incredible collaboration. There's a reason why developers haven't done anything on South Broadway in a long time. It takes a lot of effort and a lot of partnership to go into a space like this, make it sustainable, make it something that we can then project into the future. I'm very excited to have all of these, these people in our corner, because, you know, I was not trained to be a real estate person. And so I needed all of their support as we, as we did this project. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Adam. And I appreciate the collaboration that you have gathered, not just amongst neighbors, but then spreading it out and seeing how public dollars can help through donorship, and then now leveraging public dollars or public assistance, really. Because you'll have to make the investment in this property, and as the generation of sales taxes comes through, then you will, you will get repaid. But in the meantime, you'll have to pay for the improvements first. And again, that's why no taxpayer dollars are being used in this. So again, thank you for trying to revitalize South Broadway, and I appreciate all the efforts that you have gathered through the neighboring movement and really in collaborating with more partners. So thank you, Adam. I see no further questions from this bench. We will now open it up for public comment.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council. My name's Tim McQuarrie. I live at one zero zero two South Broadway. I'm right in the middle of this area. Thank you for the opportunity to show the support for this community improvement district, which I and many other residents believe is a pivotal step in uplifting the south-central neighborhood. The approval of a CID is a critical step forward, transforming our neighborhood into a more vibrant state, vibrant, safe, and economically prosperous place, and will breathe new life into the area. The neighboring movement is ready to move forward on its redevelopment project. This is a group that is not only just talking about improving the area, it has actually stepped up and started the process. As a neighbor, it's great to see someone investing in a project south of Kellogg. There's currently significant development along the south, along the Broadway corridor and the downtown area, but sadly, it stops at Kellogg. We'd like to see that change. The CID is one piece of a larger revitalization puzzle. So many of us are working toward here. My partner, Amy and I, are tackling the nuisance reporting side of things. We have a neighbor who is championing for Lincoln Park. A group of us pick up trash weekly. We have several active churches and schools. Many residents run small businesses here and are working towards opening them. We have a group that maintains a community garden. We also have many fantastic residents who own their own homes, some of which are historic and included on the local, state, and national registries. The CID will help rework a corner of the neighborhood that is currently blighted and turn it into something we residents can all take pride in. I urge you to consider the immense benefits that a CID will bring and to support this initiative wholeheartedly. SoC is a gem that needs to be repolished. Support from the city can help make this happen. Thank you. Any questions?
Thanks, Tim. Any further comments? I see none. I'll bring it back to the bench. Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor. Thank you all for the work that you're doing. It's been a pleasure to really get to know you over the last four years and see the good work that you guys are doing. I did want to give a special shout out to Karen Krasten, who's been really working as, on Lincoln Park and activating that park. Once a month, I think you're, you're trying to hold events there, and I've just been able to see it increase over the past couple of years, the attendance there. So that is a very special thing that you're doing, and we're gonna continue to work to make sure that that is a special park that the neighborhood can enjoy. We, we got a lot of work to do on South Broadway, but we've also made great strides, and you guys have made great strides over the past couple of years. So I did want to just tell you guys how much I appreciate it. Also to the other investors, the Wichita Foundation, the Health Foundation, Aaron Bastian, it's great to just see more focus down the south of the Great Wall of Kellogg, as we like to refer to it. So we're gonna continue to move forward, and again, thank you for investing in Lincoln Park as well. Again, we're gonna continue to make sure that that is a very special place. The fire is now the State Firefighter Memorial, so we're working on our end too, to, to help fundraise for that, that effort as well. So unless there's anybody else that would like to speak, I would go ahead and entertain a motion. I'd like to go ahead and move that to City Council, close the public hearing, place the ordinance on first reading, and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes seven zero. Mr. Clerk, please call the next item.
Public hearing in request by Clemens Aviation LLC for approval of a letter of intent to issue airport special facility revenue bonds.
Honorable Mayor, Members of Council, Ian Troy Anderson, Assistant City Manager. So this is a project that is gonna be conducted by Clemens Aviation. They're a fixed base operator out at Jabara Airport. They have a number of facilities out there already. They're continuing to just grow and expand, and we're really, really excited to have them as a community partner. So this project specifically is yet another eighteen-hundred-square-foot facility at Jabara to support charter operations, aircraft maintenance, and more. They're requesting a letter of intent to issue airport special facility revenue bonds in an amount not to exceed two million dollars. Again, new facility will be in similar size and nature to the existing six hangars that are already out there. There is no property tax abatement being requested, as the property is on land owned by the airport authority and, in essence, is exempt from property tax sort of in perpetuity. The approximate value of the sales tax exemption, though, is totaled at about eighty-two thousand dollars, with the city share being approximately sixty-two hundred, sixty-three hundred dollars. Standard disclaimer, revenue bonds are a mechanism for achieving a sales tax exemption and or property tax abatement in a revenue bond. City's not lending any money, bears no risk. Owner developer is required to achieve all of its own financing. Owner developer is required to achieve all of its own financing. Again, no taxpayer dollars are at risk. Clemens Aviation's or their subsidiaries agree to pay all costs of issuing the bonds and agrees to pay the annual origination fees. Bonds will be purchased by Clemens or a related entity upon issuance. Bond documents, as the bond documents are prepared, they'll be prepared by outside bond counsel, but ultimately, the city's law department will, will review and approve all of the final forms prior to issuance of any bonds. With that being said, staff's recommendation, City Council, hold a public hearing, close the public hearing, adopt the resolution, and authorize the necessary signatures. We do have representatives from Clemens Aviation here today to answer any questions you might have. Otherwise, I'll stand for questions.
Questions for staff? I see none. We'll open it up for public comment. I see none. We'll bring it back to the bench. This resides in Councilmember Tuttle's District.
Thank you very much, Troy. Thank you for the presentation and all of your work on this. I also want to thank Clemens Aviation. It's so exciting to see what's happening on that web corridor. I always say that orange cones and cranes make me happy, and there's lots of orange cones and cranes in that area right now with WU Tech and things that are going on, but also with Clemens. So with that, I would enthusiastically move that the City Council close the public hearing, adopt the resolution, and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes seven zero. Mr. Clerk, please call the next item.
Public hearing in request by Garver LLC for approval of a letter of intent to issue airport special facility revenue bonds.
Honorable Mayor, Members of Council, again, Troy Anderson, Assistant City Manager. This request comes from Garver LLC. They are an employee-owned, multi-disciplined engineering, planning, architectural, and environmental firm. They've got over 1,500 employees across the U.S. Locally, though, we are proud to have the team in our community, representing our community. They've been a good partner on a number of projects. And so this particular project, while not new construction, is a renovation of an existing facility, and therefore, we're preserving some of our existing infrastructure. The address, 1935 Midfield Road, adjacent to the Eisenhower Airport. The renovation will include reconfiguring, modernizing the existing 7,100 square foot building to provide for a second professional service office. And again, excitingly, Garver is investing because they anticipate continued growth in their organization. They're expected to grow from roughly 60 to 100 employees within the next five years. Therefore, they're requesting a letter of intent to issue airport special facility revenue bonds in an amount not to exceed $1 million. Again, the bonds will facilitate renovation, furnishing, and equipment, and equipping the project. There's no property tax abatement being requested as, again, this is on airport authority ground. Approximately value of the sales tax exemption is about $37,000, with the city share being approximately $2,800. Standard disclaimer, revenue bonds are a mechanism for achieving a sales tax exemption or property tax abatement. In a revenue bond transaction, city's not lending any money, bears no risk. Developer, owner developer is required to achieve all of its own financing, and no taxpayer dollars are at risk. Garver has agreed to pay all costs of issuing the bonds and the annual origination fees. Bonds will be purchased by Garver or related entity upon issuance. Bond documents will be prepared by outside counsel, but ultimate authority will lie with the law department for approval of final form. With that being said, staff's recommendation, City Council, hold a public hearing, close the public hearing, adopt the resolution, and authorize the necessary signatures. We do have a representative from Garver here today to answer any questions you might have, and otherwise, I'll stand for questions.
Thanks, Troy. Questions for staff? I see none. We'll open it up for public comment. I see none. We'll bring it back to the bench. This resides in Councilmember Glasscock's District.
Thank you, Mayor. See nobody else on the board. Thank you to Garver for their investment in Wichita. It's, going from 60 to 100 over the next five years is pretty incredible, nearly doubling their workforce. And so with that, I am happy to move that we close the public hearing, adopt the resolution, and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes seven zero. Mr. Clerk, please call the next item.
First reading of an ordinance authorizing the city to issue industrial revenue bonds for the bulk conveyors project.
Honorable Mayor, Members of Council, again, Troy Anderson, Assistant City Manager. Before I jump into this one, I want to just kind of set the stage a little bit. Typically, these show up on consent, right? Because we've already done the LOI, now the project's complete. This is sort of just that formal process of issuing the bonds associated with closing out the project. But here's an opportunity to really just kind of continue to celebrate the ongoing investment in and around our community, right? So Bulk Conveyors, as a global provider conveying and elevating products, they design, manufacture chain conveyors, bucket elevators, supportive conveyors, chain breakers, parts for conveying equipment. They experienced rapid growth over the past several years, and previously, in the issuance of an LOI with the intention of constructing 150,000 square foot facility to support their growth, we are proud to, and that project is now complete, right? And so we're standing here in front of you today, again, kind of celebrating the ongoing continued investment in our community. This is, again, is just the issuance of the bonds to close out the project, but wanted to take an opportunity to just thank Bulk Conveyors for their continued investment. But back in 2024, City Council adopted the resolution for the letter of intent not exceeding $13 million. Previously, we had shared with you all that they were calling, qualifying for 100% tax abatement. We provided the numbers as part of the cost benefit analysis. I won't read through those. Those are all in the staff report. Again, the project is now complete. Party's desired to close out the project. So Prestige Worldwide Holdings LLC has agreed to purchase the bonds. Again, as you heard in the other two items, right? The applicant's required to obtain all of their own financing, required to connect with somebody who will ultimately purchase the bond. So in this case, Prestigious Worldwide Holdings. Standard disclaimer around revenue bonds. So financial considerations, the purchaser agrees to pay all costs of issuing the bonds and agrees to pay the city's annual origination fees. So bond documents have been prepared, in this case, by outside counsel. Law department has reviewed and approved them in final form. With that being said, it's recommended City Council place the ordinance on first reading and authorize the necessary signatures. I will stand for questions.
Thank you, Troy. Questions for staff? I see none. We'll open it up for public comment. I see none. I'll bring it back to the bench. This resides in Councilmember Maggie Ballard's District.
Thank you, Mayor. I am very excited about this project. It is giant and incredible growth for the North Broadway corridor. So with that, I would move to place the ordinance on first reading and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes seven zero. Mr. Clerk, please call the next item.
An ordinance amending chapters 2.76 and 2.77 of the Code of the City of Wichita, Kansas pertaining to requests for open records.
Good morning, Sharon DeGraff, City Law Department. The Kansas Open Records Act, better known as CORA, establishes a process to request copies of public records. In response to the state statute, the city has adopted ordinances which establish the process to request records and the costs that can be assessed for these requests. Recently, the Kansas Legislature limited the amount of fees that could be assessed for CORA requests. The proposed amendments comply with the two, with the new law and require a couple things. First, only actual costs may be assessed. Secondly, staff time must be billed at the lowest cost category of staff necessary to provide the access or the documents, and staff time must be based on the employee's actual salary, not including benefits. The provisions are changed regarding staff time costs, fees for general staff time are reduced to $5 per quarter hour from $6 per quarter hour. Attorney time is increased from $9 per quarter hour to $10 per quarter hour, and IT time remains unchanged at $9.50 per quarter hour. Those fees are less than actual staff time to prepare these document requests. The Kansas Legislature also provided that if the invoice is greater than five hours or $200, custodians are required to contact the requister to attempt to mitigate the cost of the request, and we historically have done that in the past and tried to help the requister come up with terms or options to, to limit the scope of the request. The new bill and the proposed language in the ordinance provides that if the requister does not respond to the custodian's request within three days, then that request can be closed or considered withdrawn. The recommendation is that you approve the proposed ordinance and place it on first reading, and I would stand for any questions.
Thank you, Sharon.
Thank you.
Any, any comments from the bench? Councilman Glasscock.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Quick question. It looks like we are required to do this by state law, but how much do we expect this to affect on the budget? I imagine pretty nominal, but is there going to be any large effect on the budget, given the...
It, it will be pretty, pretty nominal.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions for staff? I see none. We'll open it up for public comment. I see none. I'll bring it back to the bench. I will move to approve the proposed ordinance and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes seven zero. Mr. Clerk, please call the next item.
2025 arterial sidewalk program.
Good morning again, Mayor, City Councilmembers. Paul Gunsmann, Public Works and Utilities, for the record. The item before you is the 2025 arterial sidewalk program. The adopted 2025 through 2034 capital improvement program includes an ongoing project to install sidewalks and wheelchair ramps on arterial streets. Proposed locations for this year are Seneca from 63rd Street to 55th Street South, 55th Street Southwest of Seneca to Charles, and 45th Street North from Hoover to Ridgeport. And if funding is available, we will add additional locations. Some of the previous arterial sidewalk projects we have constructed in recent years is on North Meridian, North 58th Street, as well as 53rd Street Northwest of Meridian. The proposed, one of the proposed 2025 locations is there on South Seneca. The, the north is to the right of the screen. There is an existing sidewalk north of 55th on Seneca. We propose to extend that sidewalk south to 63rd Street, as well as from 55th and Seneca west to Charles, and that will tie into some sidewalk that is, has been constructed there in front of Campus High. There are a few conditions that we need to work around or challenges. There is a drainage structure just south of 55th and Seneca. When that Seneca was constructed years ago, the box culvert was wide enough just to accommodate the travel lanes, so that box would likely need to be extended to accommodate new sidewalk. And then the picture on the right is a picture taken looking east from 55th and Vine. Again, some right-of-way challenges, and there's limited space along the existing roadway with trees in the existing ditch. So with this, again, I mentioned the design challenges, and there are right-of-way, may need to look at obtaining some sidewalk easements and then working around utility structures as well. The other location I will highlight today is on North Hoover. Couple of projects we have there. The red is existing path that was built in recent years. The Crystal Prairie Lake Path Project, shown in yellow, will be constructed in 2026. That will extend the PATH network through the K96 interchange up to 45th Street, and we had a request for sidewalk along 45th Street to the west over to Ridgeport. These are a few pictures of the existing conditions, looking west on Hoover. On the left, we will evaluate a crossing there at 45th Street as well. And then the picture on the right is looking southwest of 45th and Hoover. Financial considerations, the adopted 2025 through 2034 capital improvement program includes general obligation bond funding of $750,000 in 2025 for design and construction of sidewalk and wheelchair ramps. At this time, staff is requesting initiating the full amount of $750,000, and we will most likely look for design services from a consultant to help us with these projects. With that, it is recommended that City Council approve the project and locations, adopt the resolution, and authorize the necessary signatures, and I will stand for questions.
Thanks, Paul. Questions for staff, beginning with Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Paul. Just a quick technical question. Are these our four-foot sidewalks or the 10-foot, like, walk道s?
They, these will most likely be six feet along the arterial road, if we can fit that in.
Okay.
And just one question. It's more about the total budget for these three different projects. What's the total budget for each of these three?
That is not, we have not identified those. We have $750,000 for the all projects for the arterial sidewalk in 2025. So those would be separated out once we have design underway. We don't know how much that box extension would cost at this time, but we will take the money as far as it goes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. On the Crystal Prairie Lake addition, is there any way we can stamp the concrete in the form of like a Jason mask?
I don't know about that.
Councilmember Johnson, you just won't stop about that. Well, there are no further questions for staff. We will now open it up for public comment. I see none. We'll bring it back to the bench. This is in multiple districts, so any council member would like to move it? Councilmember Ballard.
Thank you. I would like to take the recommended action, approve the projects and locations, adopt the resolution, and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second.
Motion and a second, with now comments from Councilmember Glasscock.
It's motion and a second, and I'm very supportive of this. I want to especially give a shout out to Mayor Kessler of Hayesville, who's also the Chair of WAMPO. Him and I have had a lot of conversations about Seneca from 63rd to 55th Street South to make sure that we're connecting our communities, connecting this to the Hayesville community, also Ruth Clark Elementary Campus, and then South Lakes is incredibly exciting. This is, I want to thank Paul as well. This has happened faster than I think the mayor and I expected, and I'm thankful for your work on this as well. And just connecting our communities should be one of our top priorities when we're looking at sidewalk expansion. So very supportive of this, and I'll be voting in favor.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes seven zero. Mr. Clerk, please call the next item.
2026 sewer mains for future development.
Paul Gunsmann, Public Works and Utilities, for the record. The item is 2026 sewer mains for future development. The adopted 2025 through 2034 capital improvement program includes funding for projects to construct new sewer main extensions to provide service to currently underserved areas, unserved areas, sorry. The projects will primarily serve new development with sewer availability as needed as the city grows. Proposed projects are requested by, by developers and evaluated by staff to make sure the project is in the best interest of the utility and the city of Wichita. This account is run on a first-come, first-served basis, and the projects, proposed projects for 2026 are Courtyards at Jacobs Farm Edition, as well as Yellowstone Edition, and I have a map on those. and I have a map on those here in another slide. The adopted twenty twenty-five through twenty thirty-four capital improvement program includes two million, two hundred and sixty-two thousand, five hundred dollars for the extension of sewer mains in twenty twenty-six. The collection of main benefit fees and the amount of point zero seven one cents per square foot will reimburse the utility fifty percent of the main cost as smaller mains are extended. Staff has requested approval of the entire budget at this time, and the projects will be funded from future revenue bonds or sewer utility and water utility cash reserves. If revenue bonds are issued, an additional eight percent will be added for financing administrative costs. Here is a map of the two locations, Jacob Farms located there northwest of Central and Hundred and Thirty-Fifth Street, and part of the twenty twenty-five sewer mains for future development paid for the design of this, as well as the Yellowstone addition down near southeast of Pawnee and Hundred and Nineteenth Street. It is recommended that the City Council approve the budget, adopt the resolution, and authorize the necessary signatures.
Thank you, Paul. Questions for staff? I see none. We'll open it up for public comment. I see none. We'll bring it back to the bench. This is in District Four and District Five.
I'll make the motion. Recommend that the City Council approve the budget, adopt the resolution, and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes seven zero. Mr. Clerk, please call the next item.
Property and evidence rounds and porter facility improvements.
Morning, Mayor and Council. Captain Jason Cooley with Wichita Police Department. This is the property and evidence, also rounds and porters, kind of got a double name, facility improvements where we keep our evidence over at Third and Waco. The rounds and porter building is located just west of City Hall. It serves as our primary facility for the Police Department for our property and evidence operations. In the adopted twenty twenty-five to thirty-four capital improvement budget, it includes just over one point two million dollars in general obligation bonds to fund various facility improvements necessary to meet the current evidence handling and storage standards. Separately, on May seventh of twenty-four, City Council approved seven hundred and fifty thousand in additional GO bonding funding for fire suppression. These were two separate projects. That brings the fire suppression funding to just over, or at two million. However, staff identified some language errors in that, so that bonding resolution has been amended, and so both of them will be brought today. The analysis on the property and evidence improvements is elevator improvements. There are two elevators. One is the main for property and evidence. The other one is a backup in case that goes down. That is just over four hundred thousand to renovate those. New storage rooms and furnishing, just under three hundred thousand. The combination of HVAC, cameras, lighting, and electrical improvements for all those. There's a lot of refrigerators that can't shut off because they're, you know, they've got samples of different stuff in there. It's just over five hundred thousand. Then there's some miscellaneous components, security improvements. In the lobby, there's some security improvements. That's roughly eighteen thousand. That brings the total project to one million, two hundred and sixty-five thousand and eighty-six dollars for the rounds and porter improvements. The improvements will allow WPD to meet the current industry standards for their accreditation to handling evidence. The the facility needs these improvements to clarify funding parameters for the approved rounds and porter fire suppression improvement projects. So staff recommends the following actions. Initiate the one point, I'm sorry, a million, two hundred and sixty-five and eighty-six dollars in the adopted CIP funding to allocate the property and evidence improvements, and approve the amending bonding resolution for the rounds and porter fire suppression improvements funding to correct the previous omissions. Financial considerations is the, just over one point two is already in the twenty twenty-five to twenty thirty-four CIP funding and GO bonds. Staff recommends initiating the full amount at this time. And again, on May seventh, the City Council approved a revised budget of two million for fire suppression. We've made those legal changes that were needed, and so there's no changes to that fire suppression budget. Our recommended actions are approve the projected budget, adopt the new and amended resolution, and authorize the necessary signatures. And with that, I'll stand for questions.
Thank you. Questions for staff? I see none. We'll open it up for public comment. I see none. Bring it back to the bench. Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Just wanted to say I appreciate the presentation after the audit of PNE. I know many of us toured the facility, and these are definitely some necessary improvements, so I'll be supportive of that and glad to see it happening.
I will move to approve the project and budget, adopt the new and amending bonding resolutions, and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes seven zero. Mr. Clerk, please call the next item.
Safe streets and roads for all, SS four A, grant for Broadway from Thirty-seventh Street to Pawnee.
Paul Gunsmann, Public Works and Utilities. I believe this is my last item for you this morning. On June sixth, twenty twenty-three, the City Council approved a contract with Trans Systems for design services for pedestrian corridor safety improvements on Broadway from Third Street to Thirteenth Street North. We had put that project on hold for a while as we were working on the downtown street two-way conversion, as well as Broadway being kind of blocked off with the biomedical center, so been put on hold. On March twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five, the United States Department of Transportation issued a notice of funding opportunity for safe streets for all, and the program provides up to between two point five million up to twenty-five million dollars for implementation grants on corridors with high vehicular and pedestrian crashes. Broadway corridor from Thirty-seventh Street North to Pawnee has several intersections that rank in the top ten in the region for vehicular and pedestrian vulnerable road user safety concerns. Proposed improvements include ADA, and accessible pedestrian signal improvements, upgrades to pedestrian crossings, lighting, traffic signals, intersection geometry, and pavement replacement as needed. This twenty twenty-five NOFO is the last anticipated round of the SS four A funding, and the grant application is requesting twenty million dollars in federal funding with a local match of five million dollars for a total budget of twenty-five million. The state of Kansas may cover up to four point seven five million of the five million dollar match through the build Kansas Fund Program if approved, with the city covering a minimum of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Funding is available in the twenty twenty-five Traffic Signal Improvements and Signalization Program, approved by the City Council on January seventh of twenty twenty-five, and it's funded by general obligation bonds. The grant application is due June twenty-sixth, and we are obtaining letters of support for the application to be submitted. And with that, it is recommended that the City Council approves the middle of the grant application, and I will stand for questions.
Thank you, Paul. Questions for staff, beginning with Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. Paul, do we have an expected day of when we would find out if we get this grant or not?
My, I don't know that we have that true date, but my experience has been if we, if it's, if the applications are due in June, it'd probably be later this year. Probably takes about six months to get a response back.
Okay, appreciate that. Second question is, how much of this do we currently have in the CIP?
Well, not, we could have a different, few different projects, but we do have the funding in the the traffic signal program. We do have some funding in in neighborhood improvements that we might be able to utilize, as well as there is still some funding in future years in the downtown streets implementation. But if we did get this grant, then we'd probably identify it in CIP.
Okay, regardless, I would like to see us try and get in the CIP at some point, because a lot of these things are safety concerns, so just making sure we keep our community as safe as we can.
Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you. Thank you for all your work on this, Paul. I also wanted to recognize our friend Kim from the Wichita Area Metropolitan Planning Organization is here, so thank you for also being a partner, and then also thanks to KDOT for potentially being a funding source. I just think it's a fantastic opportunity, and and I'm really, really glad that you're seeking out grant funds whenever possible and then also looking for other partnerships. So as always, great job, Paul, and your team.
I want to back up to Councilmember Hoheisel's question as well, and we did, we do have a a project in the capital improvement program that was that was presented to District Six last night, and that was the Twenty-ninth and Broadway Intersection Improvements, and we'll make sure this is all coordinated together.
Councilmember Ballard.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Paul. I was just going to mention that. There's lots of discussion about North Broadway, actually from Twenty-first all the way to Thirty-seventh, so I'm excited that there might be an opportunity for some grant funding to move a little faster and a little more at one time, so thank you very much.
Any further questions for staff? I see none. We'll open it up for public comment. I see none. I'll bring it back to the bench. I am really excited about this grant, and it is because it really addresses more than one district in our community with safety concerns that could be addressed through federal dollars, not only federal dollars, but leveraging the state as well in this grant application. So my challenge to staff would be, would it be beneficial if there are more letters of support that would come along with this grant? I know that this affects District Three. We just had the SOCI Neighborhood right here today, and I could see them benefiting from this. District One and the biomedical campus right there at Main and, sorry, at Douglas and Broadway, and then Midtown, as well as Nomar in District Six. So if we could get letters of support from these specifically, and then maybe others, would that bolster this grant application to get us granted the dollars?
Any letter of support that we could get would be helpful, and I believe we have reached out to a few of those folks that you had mentioned. We we did receive a letter of support from the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Board last night as well, so we are seeking what we can.
I will add the mayor's letter of support with this and would encourage other council members to do the same. I think, again, when we can leverage nearly twenty million dollars of grant-funded dollars from the federal and state, and then just a local match of about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I say that this is exactly what we need to do, coming together and really speaking in one voice and focused. Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Like your suggestion, but we could just have one letter and we all just sign it, and that way it just comes from the council.
I would love that. I will ask staff to draft a mayor's letter with the council's signatures, and then we'll encourage, again, more community members that are along this Broadway corridor from Thirty-seventh Street all the way south to Pawnee to provide letters of support as well. With that, I move to approve the recommended action to approve this middle of grant application.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes seven zero. Mr. Clerk, please call the next item.
PUD twenty twenty-five five, amendment to PUD number seventy-eight to an illuminated building sign greater than fifteen inches in height, generally located on the east side of North Fairmont Avenue and within three hundred and fifty feet south of East Seventeenth Street North, seventeen twenty-eight North Fairmont Avenue.
Good morning. Scott Wade from the Planning Department. So as you heard, the applicant is requesting to amend an existing PUD or planned unit development, which is custom zoning, in order to allow for an illuminated building sign that is currently not permitted by that custom zoning. This item is being heard today because the District Advisory Board and the Planning Commission's recommendations for approval are different. In terms of the request, as you heard, the applicant has indicated they would like to install one four-foot by fifty-foot LED illuminated sign on the north elevation above the third-floor windows, and I have a graphic to show you what this looks like. An important note, that this is not an LED electronic message sign, which has different messages on it. This is static letters that are backlit by LED lights. The existing and custom planned unit development zoning for the site currently limits signage to signage that is allowed in the B multifamily zoning district. In terms of the property, as you can see here, subject site is generally located to the south and east of the intersection of Seventeenth Street and Fairmont Avenue. The address is seventeen twenty-eight North Fairmont. The subject site is made up of approximately three ownership parcels and is approximately zero point four three acres in size, zoned planned unit development and developed with a multifamily residential building. In terms of context, property to the north is zone B multifamily. You can look at that. Here we go. And is developed with multifamily dwelling. Further north are parking lots for WSU. Property to the east of this site is zone PUD and is developed with multifamily dwelling. Property to the south is zoned B and developed with a group residence. Properties to the west across North Fairmont Avenue are zone B and developed with a duplex, and then also includes parcel two of PUD seventy-eight and is developed with a surface parking lot. Terms of the staff report, the staff report provides information about the existing PUD zoning requirements. The recommended PUD text and amendments are attached to the staff report. In terms of review, on May fifth, the District Advisory Board recommended approval seven to one of the amendment with the condition that the building sign shall not be illuminated. One member of the public spoke at that meeting seeking additional information. On May eighth, the Planning Commission held a public hearing and recommended approval. That vote was thirteen zero one of the amendment per the applicant's request, which would allow the sign to be illuminated. Again, one member of the public spoke at that public hearing seeking additional information. No protest petitions were received for this case, therefore the zone change request can be approved with a simple majority vote, or four of seven. In terms of council actions, recommend that the City Council adopt the findings of the Planning Commission, approve the requested zone change, place the ordinance on the first reading, authorize the necessary signatures, and instruct the city clerk to publish the ordinance after approval on the second reading. Of course, this requires a four of seven vote. Alternatives include the following: You can override the MAPC, adopt alternative findings, and approve the amendment to the PUD as recommended by the DAB. That would require five of seven votes, because it's an override. Likewise, you can override the MAPC, adopt alternative findings, and deny the request. That would require five of seven, or as always, you can return the case to the MAPC for additional consideration, which requires just a simple majority. In terms of process, City Council policies at the public hearing for planning items occurs at the Planning Commission meeting, and the City Council does not typically receive public comments on zoning items. So with that, I'll take you through some of the graphics and images. So here's the aerial showing the subject site. Here's the zoning map, which was described earlier. Here's the image of the sign. The one on the top is during daylight. The one on the bottom is during the afternoon or early evening, and so you can see that it's, again, static letters that are there, and it just would be backlit behind the letters. So here's what it would look like during the day. Here is the map from the comprehensive plan showing residential and employment mix recommended for this area. Here's the PUD graphic and the text that goes along with that. Here's the protest map and notification area, and again, no protests were received. Here's a photo of the site right now. It says, look, this is the property immediately to the north. Here's the property, I believe, to the south. And this is looking, this is to the east, looking from the north to the south. This is similar to the image that you saw. This is the existing conditions. This is the unit, the property to the west across the street, and there's the parking lot just to the south of that. Here it is in the evening. These were photos that were provided by... were photos that were provided by the applicant, showing the illumination that takes place at the WSU parking lots, a little bit further to the north of the site in the WSU campus. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Questions for staff?
I see none. This resides in Councilmember Johnson's district.
Thanks, Mayor. Just for openness, there were no protests filed. There was a bit of a lively discussion at DAB, of course, about some of the lighting. I appreciated the work of the DAB to try to find a middle ground upon visiting the site at night. I feel like there is quite a bit of illumination already in the lights behind. The letters will not add to that in any significant way. So therefore, I would move that the city council adopt the findings of the MAPC and approve the requested zone change, place the ordinance on first reading, authorize the necessary signatures, and instruct the city clerk to publish the ordinance after approval on the second reading.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes seven zero. Mr. Clerk, please call the next item.
Noncongregate shelter and permanent supportive housing development sub-agreement, project-based voucher award, and funding allocation.
Good morning, Honorable Mayor, Members of Council Sally Stang with the Housing and Community Services Department for the record. The item I have for you today is a sub-development agreement for the next phase at the multi-agency center. So, little bit of background, on August 22nd, 2023, the city council approved a master development agreement with Petra Inc. for the development of the Second Light Multi-Agency Center and its associated affordable housing. The vision for the Second Light Multi-Agency Center is to provide a one-stop shop for people experiencing homelessness, a place for programs to collaborate for ease of access into various services, including congregate shelter, noncongregate shelter, housing navigation, housing, housing case management, benefit enrollment assistance, and employment assistance. Public consultation and due diligence led the city to acquire the former Park Elementary School located at 1025 North Main Street from USD 259. Since then, we've been busy. On September 3rd, 2024, the city council approved a sub-development agreement in the amount of $2,252,250 for the renovations and expenses necessary to prepare that site for the emergency winter shelter last year. And since that time, all of that work has been completed with the exception of the wall and paving of the access drive. Following that, on November 5th, 2025, the city council approved a sub-development agreement in the amount of $6,373,756 for the renovations and expenses necessary to renovate the property for a permanent build-out of the Second Light Multi-Agency Center for year-round low-barrier emergency shelter and space for agencies to provide supportive services. And a little bit of that demo work is underway. The plans are still being finalized, but there are aggressive plans to have most of that construction completed by end of year. The vision for the Second Light Multi-Agency Center has always included not only the congregate shelter and supportive services provided inside the Park Elementary School, but also the plan for noncongregate shelter and permanent supportive housing units built on the properties for people experiencing homelessness who will benefit from the supportive services provided at Second Light. This conversation actually started with the allocation of the home funds under the American Rescue Plan Act, which were very specific, funding made available for the development of housing and noncongregate shelter for people experiencing homelessness. The original site plans actually show this building directly next to the one-story behind the existing structure. So even from the beginning, this has been part of that conversation. So, the plan, construction of 25 units of noncongregate shelter and 50 units of permanent supportive housing. This is a slight, actually a slight increase from the numbers in the Home ARP allocation plan from 2023. So this is good news, that the numbers are up. It was 15 and 40. We're believing we can do 25 units of noncongregate shelter and 50 units of permanent supportive housing. Installation of access controls throughout the building, resident laundry rooms on each floor, rooftop solar to keep operational costs down, site improvements, including parking, outdoor space, and pet areas, furniture, fixtures, equipments, architectural and engineering, soft cost compliance, contingency, and the development fee. Right now, typical middle-market apartments are averaging about $135,000 to $150,000 per unit. This particular project, though, has components that are going to escalate those costs, including hardened internal shell of the units, because we expect these to be heavy-duty use, fully furnished units with built-in components, so platforms for the beds, desk, and storage, furniture that can't be picked up and taken or necessarily broken, an elevator, which is not necessarily standard in a three-story apartment building, again, separate laundry rooms on each floor, and then that efficiency of the building, that solar installation, the envelope to focus on heat transfer, et cetera. And lastly, Davis Bacon and Section 3 labor standards requirements, because this contains federal funding, Davis Bacon prevailing wages are going to be required from day one. The development agreement sets forth Petra's responsibilities for engineering, design, construction, management, infrastructure improvements, the budgets, the schedules, reporting and responsiveness, staffing and accounting, and compensation. Funding in the amount of $15,182,117 has been identified for this project from the following sources. $10 million in public housing sales proceeds for the housing component. Those sales proceeds are limited and must be used for a Section 8 or public housing development project. $1 million in CDPG funds for noncongregate shelter and the $4,182,117 in Home ARP for the noncongregate shelter. Little wrinkle to this, about 20 minutes ago, we were notified that our COC has selected this project to potentially, to apply to HUD for a newly announced grant called the COC Builds Grant. We're going to continue down this path and apply for that new funding source at the same time. If we were to be awarded that funding, it would offset the public housing sales proceeds, which then could be used for another project that could be combined with project-based vouchers. That is a very competitive grant. HUD is estimating eight projects across the country, but our original scoring shows us hitting every point available under that grant. So we are going to be, we just found out, like I said 20 minutes ago, we are going to be hurrying because that grant application is due at the end of June. We'll be bringing it, unfortunately, on a consent agenda on the 24th because it's as soon as we can get it on. But again, we're going to continue moving forward with the funding we've got outlined. The $1 million in CDPG and the $4,182,117 in Home ARP funds were allocated for this project through the Community Development Program's Annual Action Plan that the city council approved on May 6th. The $10 million allocation maximum from the public housing sales proceeds must be approved through this process. The Law Department has reviewed and approved this development sub-agreement as to form. Any, again, any project funded with public housing sales proceeds must be public housing, which we know we're not continuing, or project-based voucher assistance in accordance with HUD Notice PIH 2020-23. So it is recommended that the Wichita Housing Authority Board approve the allocation of $10 million in public housing sales proceeds, the award of 50 project-based vouchers, and the development sub-agreement with Petra in an amount not to exceed $15,182,117 as a sub-agreement under the master development agreement for the development of 25 units of noncongregate shelter and 50 units of permanent supportive housing at the Park Elementary School location at 1025 North Main Street, and authorize the necessary signatures. That was a mouthful. I stand for any questions. And Thailand Dyer from Petra is also here. Should you have any questions for him?
Thank you very much. We'll begin with Councilmember Glasscock.
Thank you, Mayor Sally. I like a lot of things about this, and I have a few questions as well. I don't see anybody from Second Light here because those would be probably a majority of my questions. And so regarding, first off, I want to say thank you for the use of the public housing funds, the $10 million. I think that's a great use. I'm glad that we've been selling our public housing units to move towards this project, and I think that's a win for our community. And so these are more questions about the future operations, less of the upfront investment that we're making right now. Received an update from Second Light just a couple days ago, and there's a lot of updates, but there was no update regarding long-term funding streams. And so I have somewhat of a concern moving forward with an expansion of the project that eventually will probably be turned over to them in an operating agreement.
Oh, no.
Entire structure. Okay. So can you answer those questions?
Yes. This particular project won't be turned over to the MAC board. This one has to be managed and maintained in accordance with the requirements of project-based vouchers, et cetera, for which they have absolutely no experience.
Okay, great clarification. So regarding that, what is our permanent funding stream to make sure that we can maintain these properties? Is that budgeted in the future and allocated for the future?
So one of the beauties in being able to build this with absolutely no debt is the fact that the rental stream, so they'll be, we'll be able to collect the voucher rent on 50 of those units, which will cover the operational costs of the housing with some excess to help cover the cost on the noncongregate shelter. Now, there is the expectation that supportive services and other services related to noncongregate shelter will be a collaboration with Second Light, but that housing piece is absolutely separate.
Great news. Thank you for adding that to the presentation. I think that's very important when we move forward as well. I know you mentioned one thing in the presentation. I would just be interested in the justification. You said it's not typical for a three-story unit to have an elevator. I know elevators have a lot of cost, especially the maintenance of elevators in the future. I imagine the first floor would be able to have ADA compliant rooms. So what is the justification? Is it a federal requirement, or is that a cost savings that we could have?
It is not a federal requirement, but the housing units have to have ADA units, and the noncongregate shelter units are going to be on the first floor. So there are going to be ADA units on the second and third floors, which we expect many of the people that would be staying in these units that need those intensive wraparound services are going to have mobility issues. And so having an elevator reviving, it also helps us with control, as we see with, you can control access to different floors for different purposes. So the elevator helps with that.
Thank you for your answers to my questions. I feel much more comfortable with those answers. So thank you.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. I just had a technical question. The council approved originally some home funds for this project. So this project is tied to home funds?
It is Home ARP funds, which is, they are home adjacent, and you're wondering if you need to abstain. I don't believe you do because this has no connection to the activity we do with Habitat and the funding that is available for homeownership.
Okay. Well, in that case, I love this project. Great work. And I am really excited about it and just seeing this vision come to reality.
Councilmember Ballard.
I pushed it for Councilmember Hoheisel because this thing's not working.
Yeah. So I appreciate that. Thanks, Maggie, and thanks, Mayor. So we are retaining control of these units?
We are.
Is there like a certain timeline? Is it kind of like 15 years with the other affordable housing?
Yes, the home funds. And then if this, we get, receive the COC Builds money, that's going to add a whole nother level of compliance. But the Home ARP funds will require that both the noncongregate shelter units as well as the housing units be affordable for at least 15 years. We don't have any intention of ever changing that. The project-based vouchers can be awarded for a term up to 20 years, renewable for 20 years. So we could have 40 years of rent assistance tied to these units.
Okay. Second question, is there a goal for like a length of stay in each of these types of shelters or units? I mean?
So the noncongregate shelter units, really, and some of the brilliance in the design is the units are going to be identical, whether they're an affordable housing unit or noncongregate shelter unit. They're going to be small. They're going to accommodate one individual. But in noncongregate shelter, there's no lease to sign. That is a place for people, particularly people who have vulnerabilities, whether that's medically vulnerable as a respite until we can connect them to housing. So that is definitely very short-term. And to be able to stay into noncongregate shelter, they have to be working towards that housing goal. Whereas with permanent supportive housing, similar to what happened with the studios, these are deliberately being designed as small, but being onsite where there are services. Someone who stabilizes isn't likely going to want to stay at that location very long. But as permanent supportive housing, they're going to have a lease and going to comply by that lease. Now, we're not going to force someone to move, but someone who's stabilized is likely going to want to move. And the beauty of project-based vouchers is anyone who successfully completes their term is eligible for a regular voucher to move into any unit of their choosing.
Okay. And what are the qualifications to be awarded one of those vouchers?
So those vouchers are tied to the units, and per our Home ARP allocation plan, the referrals into those units will come through the coordinated entry process. And they're really going to be targeted towards those people who have vulnerabilities, who might have a challenge in staying in congregate shelter because of their medical condition or their trauma background.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Ballard.
Thank you. Sally, thank you for all of your hard work and everybody else, Troy and Thailand and the whole crew. At first, I thought it was a little bit premature to go ahead and start with Phase Three, but everything takes longer than we expected to or we want it to. So I'm really happy that we are keeping, you know, moving the ship on this Phase Three or Project Three while we're still in the middle of Two or wrapping up Two or, you know, all of the things. But I'm really excited about this. We know how much our community needs, both congregate and noncongregate. And so I'm really happy that we're able to provide these units. I'm looking forward to seeing this project through. So thank you for all your hard work because I know it's very hard.
Councilmember Glasscock.
I think I'm accidentally on the board, but one last comment that I forgot to mention earlier regarding rooftop solar. I'm glad that we're including that as an investment. I hope that we do that on future projects in the city and making sure while we construct projects, we're also being good stewards of the environment and our resources. So just thank you for that. And I forgot, I would be remiss in not saying that.
Vice Mayor Johnston.
Thank you. Sally, you mentioned that elevators will help with security. Will there be security in this building like there is at the Second Light?
That's part of that collaboration with Second Light, especially on that noncongregate shelter. In a general apartment complex, you generally don't have onsite security for that. So that's part of that expected collaboration, that the security guards associated with Second Light are going to be there patrolling related to the noncongregate shelter. That's a benefit to the people who live upstairs.
Okay. And then we can keep the firearms and drugs out of that.
Correct. That's the goal.
Okay, okay. Thank you. And I just want to say thank you very much for your work. You're very good at your job. Really do appreciate it. And this is another example of that. So thank you.
Thank you.
Sally, I have a couple of technical questions. I'll start off with slide number 130.
Backwards, sorry. Yes.
I know this is a clerical error, but it is November 5th, 2024 that this was approved. But I wanted to make mention because last week on Wednesday, we had our first town hall meeting between the city, county, and USD 259 elected individuals. And again, one of the things we talked about was homelessness. And so I'm just going to read this portion because I want it on the record, that this council has dedicated a lot of resources regarding homelessness. It is one of the top four priorities, and it does take collaboration. And this is an example of that collaboration between multiple entities. So in that handout, it says homeless services and Second Light Multi-Agency Center. Since 2023, the city has devoted significant resources to addressing the shelter, service, and housing needs of the community's homeless residents. From 2023 through 2025, the city allocated $1.1 million for the emergency winter shelter operations. Cedric County joined in this effort in 2023, 2024 with an additional $194,000. The city also contributed $8.7 million for the remodeling of USD 259's former Park Elementary School into a multi-agency center now called Second Light. This facility will provide shelter services, needed amenities, and support services for Wichita's homeless population. The city has also provided $5 million to support the operation for two years. Cedric County will provide behavioral health services in the center through Calm Care. During the upcoming year, the city will invest another $15 million to construct 50 units of supportive housing and 25 units of noncongregate shelter spaces. of non-congregate shelter space. So again, thank you, because I know that this took a lot of effort, and it took a lot of partnership and a lot of many meetings to get us to this very place where we are seeing Phase One, Phase Two, and Phase Three coming before the council. So first, I just want to say thank you for that. The technical questions that I have now come from slide number 133. So in these, I know that there's a lot of confusion amongst community members between what is congregate, non-congregate, and then permanent supportive housing.
Yes.
Can you please start off by addressing, so that individuals who are maybe tuning in for the first time, understand the differences between these types of sheltering/housing?
Sure. Congregate shelter is truly that. People congregate and sleep in a shared space. There isn't a lot of, necessarily a lot of privacy, oftentimes separated between sexes, et cetera. Non-congregate shelter really came out through COVID-19. It really came into light as communities were trying to separate people. When living in a congregate setting, the spread of COVID-19 was rampant, and a lot of communities moved to non-congregate shelter. Many communities use motel rooms as an example of non-congregate shelter. Each person has their own individual space, and the definition by HUD says they must have their own private bathroom, but not necessarily kitchen facilities. We've, and what came out of after that is they saw much greater improvements in people's lives, faster recovery as people, of those people who came from non-congregate shelter. Permanent supportive housing is just that. It's housing. It's an apartment complex. The permanent supportive around it means that there are supportive services that come with that. And those supportive services can range. They can be intensive clinical case management services that people get connected to, whether that's mental health or substance abuse, or if that's budgeting and housekeeping. It can be, it's really tailored to the individual's needs to try and help them stabilize. So permanent supportive housing is, in fact, housing with services that come along with it.
Thank you for that distinction between the three separate sleeping types that we have. Now I'm going to ask about permanent supportive housing. You mentioned this is much like Humankind Ministries, the studios.
Yes.
Can you address how long usually people are staying at the studios?
That is a tough question, because people are often, I've seen people who've been there as long as three years. I've seen people who unfortunately aren't successful in two months. It really is variable based on persons' individual needs. We've had many people who've moved from the studios into other housing resources. And once again, when I compared it, was really about the idea that the units are small, they come with intensive case management, and once somebody stabilizes, it's usually themselves who are saying, you know what? I can move into something in a different neighborhood or a unit that's larger than the one that I'm in.
Another technical question. Before permanent supportive housing, I think that there's something in between that we have not discussed, which is transitional housing. Can you address that as well, as I know that Union Rescue Mission has transitional housing, which is a program that's either three months or one year? Can you address the spectrum of this type of sheltering to housing?
So actually, we don't tend to see transitional housing in three-month increments. Usually, that's like a rapid rehousing scenario. Most transitional housing is 18 months to two years. It's usually tremendous case management and other services that are provided. One of the biggest gaps we've seen in transitional housing is there's no exit plan. If someone doesn't have the financial wherewithal to be able to pay rent on their own when they leave transitional housing, they oftentimes cycle back into homelessness. Because unlike our project-based voucher scenario, we're able to give those people who have successfully stabilized the ability to take rent assistance with them. Simply because they've stabilized doesn't necessarily mean they have the ability to pay full market rent at that point. And that voucher gives them that ability. HUD actually stopped supporting transitional housing, deeming it the most expensive, least efficient means of addressing homelessness. Now, mind you, Union Rescue Mission takes no federal funding, so they, you know, can create any program they want. I often talk to my staff and say, there are people who absolutely need that tremendous structure that Union Rescue Mission provides. It's not for everybody, but for the people who actually, who need that, it is a great connection to be able to connect, you know, an individual to that level of service, if that's what they feel that they need in order to be successful. So there's a place for it all. Unfortunately, with our HUD funding, we are unable to voucher units that are transitional housing, and the COC funding has actually eliminated transitional housing as an eligible activity.
In talking about permanent supportive housing, these will be project-based vouchers.
Correct.
How much are these vouchers typically price range?
Oh, yeah, you asked me a good one. Now, remember, HUD converted us to small-area fair market rents as of January 1. So the voucher cap depends on your zip code. So I don't happen to know that number off the top of my head, but on an efficiency apartment, brand-new construction, fully furnished with onsite supportive services, we would expect those rents to be somewhere between $650 and $750.
Again, those dollars from the vouchers will then be able to maintain and operate that specific building.
Correct.
I'm not talking about the two separate Second Light buildings, but just the housing piece.
Correct.
And then, just one last time, just to wrap it up, because I think, again, there are a lot of terms that were utilized, and I really believe that we have, we need to explain the spectrum of the opportunities for individuals. Correct me if I'm wrong. If an individual is facing homelessness, right now, they would have non-congregate sheltering available through Second Light.
Congregate shelter.
Sorry, congregate sheltering through Second Light. With this housing piece, there could be a possibility for non-congregate housing for 25 individuals.
Correct.
Then, rapid rehousing slash transitional housing through programs like Union Rescue Mission, whom do not take federal dollars, can have programs that achieve some sort of graduation at three months to one year. But this is not what we're talking about here.
No.
And then lastly, the whole point is that you want people to come from sheltering to go to actual housing, and this is independent housing, whether it's voucher housing or just independent housing through your means by being employed, et cetera. Is that correct in terms of the spectrum?
It is, it is a spectrum, but people aren't required to go through every step of that spectrum. Right now, we have an initiative where we have a caseworker who's going out and doing encampments and trying to connect people to housing resources, and have people go directly from encampment to housing, if available, to help reduce the strain on the shelters that are there. There's a reason they're not going into the shelters to begin with, right? So even though there's a spectrum of resources and everybody's needs are different, there is the ability, there is not a requirement to start at A and end at Z, right? Someone could start at C and end at V, who knows? It really is tailored to that individual's needs. And we want to make sure that people are connected to the right type of housing resource. That's one of the challenges, challenges our continuum of care is looking at, is, you know, do we have resources in the wrong buckets? When I say that, do we have enough permanent supportive housing, rapid rehousing, shelter beds? Those are all things that we're evaluating and hoping to get to better numbers with the new HMIS system, so that we are using the, you know, scarce resources we have in the best way possible to serve the needs of the individual.
Thank you very much, Sally. I see no further questions for staff. We will now open it up for public comment.
Hello, City Hall. Nice to see you all again. I'm here with the Grassroots Bridge Builders, and we're really, Donna Garcia, you guys know me. We're really excited to hear this housing piece. We've been having conversations with the Housing Department and other service providers, talking about the importance of this transitional period that we have, stabilizing people off of the streets and getting them ready for homes. I did have a couple of questions and a couple of concerns and a couple of highlights that I would like to bring up with the plan as it stands. So the programs, operations, referrals, the leasing, the controls, that kind of thing, just wanting to verify, is that going to be a partnership? Is that going to be the city? Is that going to be the people at Second Light who are making these kind of decisions, providing that oversight and that accountability? And then we have to talk about the barriers that our clients are facing and that we're finding out there on the street at the tip of the spear. We are having a lot of issues operating within the COC and the HMIS system when we're trying to get these referrals placed. You can only get a referral for these vouchers and this rental assistance if you go through a COC provider, which there are only a handful. One of our clients has a manager from the Health Department and is not able to get any kind of assistance, though she's a great candidate for it. So we can't access these things. So if this is in place with this new shelter in the congregate, non-congregate, and supportive housing, we may continue to run into these issues if we don't have really good collaboration. And then we also want to talk about what are the requirements? Because if it's funded by HUD and it's funded by the COC, that's going to come with rules, it's going to come with limitations. So we're looking at individuals with criminality. We're looking at individuals who haven't been homeless long enough. There is a complete list of things that will keep people from accessing these housing resources. And I think that we need to discuss contingency plans for those. If, I'm sure they've already been discussed, but just to let the public and the rest of us know, so that we can start planning with our clients on how we can address some of this. If we have families, if we have couples, if we have medically complex, how are we going through and addressing these issues? And making sure that everyone who is homeless has an access. Are we talking about looking forward and extending beyond this? Because we're going to have individuals who can't participate or have access, things like, do we have a men's annex, where we can have people who have criminal backgrounds, where they can also rebuild their lives and have access to society? You know, moms with kids and couples who take care of each other, people who need 24-hour caregivers, there's a lot that needs to go into it. And we would like, you know, from the boots on the ground to give that perspective and make sure that everyone is aware that there are significant limitations that we're going to be facing, and just have open, robust conversations about that. And then, you know, we're really curious about how this application process is going to go, and just making sure that we have as much opportunity for anyone else. So I would love to maybe hear back, get some feedback, clarifications, or answer any questions that you guys might have of us, of what we're seeing and what some of our barriers and limitations have been.
You can have a seat. I'll ask Sally to come forward.
Thank you.
Thanks. Sally, can you address a couple of the things that she mentioned?
Sure. So specifically, this particular project, those units are designed to be single occupancy. We do see, no, that's an issue and a barrier. It's going to be an issue for people who want to be housed or in non-congregate shelter as a couple, or persons with children. That is actually done by design. The minute we open it up to more than one occupancy, you have to take children in housing, or it's a fair housing violation. So because other services, we don't want to put restraints on people being able to access the congregate shelter or the non-congregate shelter, because we've built it in a way that requires us to have, be housing children on the site. Definitely a challenge. The requirement to take individuals referred through the coordinated entry process, that was actually instilled as part of the Home ARP allocation plan and a requirement from the Fair Housing and Equal Opportunity Office. The best thing I can say is other organizations who want to be able to make referrals become part of that, the continuum of care. It doesn't take much to be a member of the continuum of care. It takes engaging in the meetings and training and understanding of the documents and the confidentiality, et cetera, and then following through and actually providing that supportive service that you're committing to do when you make a referral. So any other particular? Okay, thank you.
Any further public comment?
Hello again. My name's Sarah. I'm homeless. I'm kind of, I'm also with Grassroots Bridge Builders, and I missed the first part of the conversation, because I'd had a screwdriver in my bag. And when you live out of a bag, it's really hard to get into places, because you have everything you have and didn't even realize it was with your pins. So I do, I don't know exactly, but I've been following you guys a lot. I know we've talked on different levels, and I just wanted, there's a couple of things that I've been wanting to like speak out on about, because right now, I'm at the frontier, which is the Harriet and Broadway area, which we're associated, they were just talking about that area too. And one of the things I think up here and people, like, just being differentiated, like, being communities and being that stigma or that, that, you know, like, to the people and talking, like, because I talk a lot, and I talk to everybody. I mean, like, my friend, my, there's not anybody that I really don't know, and if I don't know them, I make a point, because everybody is valid. And for that, I don't see like class, I don't know, like, somebody down, I used to run a parenting ministry, and we have our ups and downs, but a lot of the, like, one thing that, time, time and space. I mean, we have all of these people, like, just on where I live, because that whole, I'm trying to find out, like, where we go for changing the guidelines for HUD, because like, being homeless and the guidelines that, like, most people, we've talked to people, as far as staying on this topic, I'm sorry, I'm still learning how to talk to you guys and focus. But my question on this, like, we're looking at this projected date, and we have that now, right now. These people are out, out in like, a tent city, I was just out there, where, well, the sticks, wherever, like, there's a large community, and just in that area, there's probably over 100 people. And so to think, like, the housing, and that's a huge $15 million for, like, space, and just, like I said, focus, trying to find things, like, the biggest part is, like, falling into those guidelines, the mentally, the mentally, the criminally, you know, we have on Broadway so many people sleeping outside, and there's still, we have the people that are in this area, but how do we reach out and, like, make a bigger impact? Because to me, it seems like we're still being herded to one location, you know, and that's just going to be, most of us have been in so much disappointment to get our hopes up, to have something projected for a couple, maybe a year and a half off, to find out that they're spending so much money on that, that these people out here, people are going to jail, people are dying, people are, and this, this city, people are, it's not criminal behavior, it's desperation, you know, when just, all we need is an ID, and we got the municipal ID coming out, but they're waiting for a certain, how do we get this more aligned that it's not so much red tape? Because, I mean, all the effort that's out here and all, I've been to a lot of meetings, and I've got a lot, but right now, my daughter's in foster care, because I'm homeless, and they want to know what's going on, and I can't even get a job till I get an ID. I ordered a birth certificate, but that urgency, we're sitting here talking about projected time next year. Meanwhile, my 14-year-old hasn't been home in a year. You know, I've tried to get the services, I've done, as far as gone to a nonprofit agency, started my own, because I've tried all the other avenues just to get one, and I'm not the only person out here. We have those people and that stigma, well, if you're homeless, you know, immersion, you know, start having more of the people, their opinions weigh in on, like, what you guys need, because people want to be heard. I think you would, could reduce a lot of things if we took a public speaking class, and we could learn how to translate our thoughts into things that you guys can turn into actions.
Thank you, Sarah. Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor, and I appreciate the comments there, Sarah. Honestly, this is something that should have been done possibly a generation ago, so in that way, we would have this set up now. So this is a process that we're all working through and trying to come up with the best results. I have heard about the municipal IDs, so I'm wondering if I could get an update on where we are with that process and when we could expect that to get up and going. I think we're a little behind from our target day on that one.
Thank you, Councilmember Hoheisel. We are within weeks of being able to issue municipal IDs. So we've actually printed our first mock-up just late last week. We've installed necessary software and hardware. We've worked through workflows necessary to store the information. The last thing is staff training and then marketing before we'll be able to issue IDs. Two components to that. Municipal Court will take the lead on issuing IDs here at City Hall. Sally could provide more detail in terms of how housing plans to issue IDs, whether that be at the MAC, I think I've also heard, excuse me, Second Light, I've also heard conversations around potentially issuing IDs through mobile services.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
So our challenges of issuing IDs at the MAC is the, is the construction schedule. So by the end of June or beginning of July, they are going to have such a compressed area. So all services, there's just not space to do it at the multi-agency center during construction, for sure. And then there's been some challenges around the mobility of the equipment. I've been told that the jostling of the
I've been told that the jostling of the printers is going to make that a bit of a challenge. So we're still working our way through that process. Obviously, you know, once we're able to be issuing them here in City Hall, we'll limp through that process in the end, once the multi-agency center is set up. The problem is, I don't have staff that just sits at a desk and waits for people to come in. It may end up being by appointment over at the MAC when we are at the Second Light, when, when we can schedule someone to go over and assist folks. We also want to be able to look at the demand. Once these things roll out and people are made aware and that marketing gets, gets out there, what is that demand? So we can right-size that because that would be, again, a waste of resources if we sit someone and they're only seeing two or three people a day.
If we set it up by appointment, is there any way we could, like, if we're printing them out here at City Hall, is there any way we could, one day a week, provide transportation from the shelter or from Second Light to City Hall to get that?
Worst-case scenario, the, the application will be mobile. That's not a problem. We can connect with any laptop with an AirCard. It's the printing. So if staff had to go there, set them up, come back here, print and take them back, that could potentially be an option too. But we're still working through those logistics. We don't want those logistics to slow down the ability of courts to be able to start here.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. I just wanted to say you don't have to apologize for how you advocate. You advocate perfectly as is. And I appreciate you using your voice and speaking up. And if you ever feel a little nervous about it, and you're doing a lot better than I did when I started, so just keep it up. Public speaking courses are fine, but you articulated yourself perfectly, so just keep it up.
Will continue with public comment.
One of the things that I've noticed is that, yes, you can put people into those housings, but at the same time, help provide them jobs. Because with me, I aged out of the foster care system in 2008. Every place that I've applied at because of using a homeless shelter's address, I've gotten lumped in as a drunk or druggie, being told that I wasn't needed or wanted, and it's been hard. And that was back in 2008, and I'm now 36. I aged out at 19. All I ask is, yes, help us with the, get the IDs up and running. Help us get into these places, but have it where, give us an opportunity to grow a garden. That way we can do something, actually maybe do some work, take that garden, sell the vegetable, fruits and vegetables to get it where we can grow flowers, sell the flowers. So then that way we can start getting some form of income to the point of being able to maybe help pay back the city, but also at the same time, help us actually get our foot in the doors of various jobs, including maybe telling these temp agencies, okay, if you send this much, many out, we'll give you this much in the tax break or whatever. Because I have noticed that if a person doesn't have transportation of their own, like, their own vehicle or driver's license, they're almost stuck at the, at the temp agencies, twisting their thumbs until noon, then they're told that there's no more jobs to come back the next day. Then it's over and over. And that's from my experience. Some of the others manage to get sent out on a daily basis. But with someone like me that has little to no job experience, it's that much harder. And it's like, if I can just get my foot in the door of housing, then maybe I can get my foot in the door in a job. Or even if I can get my foot in the door in a job, then I can get in some housing. And there's churches around, like, with my home church, Community Baptist Church, my pastor, underneath three different pastors, every single pastor's told me that if I can get myself into an apartment, they'll help me furnish the whole apartment. So I know there's groups out there that are willing to help. It's just, why can't we just all get them together? And it's like, instead of trying to have the city fund it all, all the time, see if the city be willing to say, okay, we're going to see if we can use this parking lot over here and have it where these groups over here come together to do various fundraisers, like car washes throughout the summer. Or, and then have it where some of those proceeds from the car wash go towards paying for the city to help pay for the water bill, the electric bills, but also have it where some of that money can go towards the various nonprofits that was there to do so. Because I think that when more people coming together, then more things start to happen. And, and so it's like, because it's always, I've always felt like I was on bottom of the barrel. Because with my situation, because of an accusation, it got me charged and evicted for something I didn't even do. I was always told that I could not qualify for Section 8, I couldn't qualify for HUD. And so, and I know I'm not the only one that was put on it. And I even have come to find out, one of my younger brothers, who was actually adopted into the Scotts side of the family, is also now in DOC. I'm not sure exactly why. At the same time, I don't want him having to face the same problems if he has to parole here to Wichita that I've been facing since 2008. When I aged out of the foster care system, started dealing with the system. I want to be able to actually be able to take his hand and guide him through and have it, where he has a better experience at it than I do, even if I have to reach out to him once he paroles, if he has to parole to Newton. But I don't necessarily want him to parole, and I'd rather have him parole here because of the bigger city, more opportunities. And it's like, what we need is get companies that will come together and say, hey, look, okay, we'll hire this many homeless. And it's like, they need to focus on trying to get the homeless hired. Because once you get the homeless working, as they're working, then offer them a financial literacy course. Because then once they learn how to do a financial literacy course, then they can work and save their way up and out of being homeless to the point of eventually renting or even buying their own house, or even eventually taking the time to invest in themselves to the point of owning their own company one day.
Thank you very much, George. I know that there are multiple organizations here in Wichita, and I'm sure Sally knows them, that can assist, including Goodwill Industries.
Yes, our care coordination teams actually have an MOU with both Workforce Alliance and Goodwill Industries. They meet once or twice a month, making referrals of people who are interested in, in employment to try and connect them to either job training or employment opportunities. So yes, definitely, we can try and connect him to those resources, for sure.
Thank you, Sally. If you don't mind connecting him to Workforce Alliance or Goodwill, it would be appreciated. Any further questions or comments from the public? I see none, I'll bring it back to the bench. Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. I did quickly want to say I love Georgia's suggestion of a garden. I've always loved gardens. So if there is a way with Second Light or any way to maybe have a small one there, I think that would be great for everyone.
With that, this resides in Councilmember Ballard's district.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to take the recommended action, approve the allocation of $10 million in public housing sale proceeds, the award of 50 project-based vouchers, and the development sub-agreement with Petra in the amount not to exceed $15,182,117 as a sub-agreement of the master development agreement for development of 25 units of non-congregate shelter and 50 units of permanent supportive housing at the Park Elementary School location at 1025 North Main Street and authorize the necessary signatures.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I will just add one last thing. I did find it, George. If you look up on Facebook, Second Chance Services ICT, they came to speak at a council meeting before, offering jobs to individuals. And again, Second Chance Services ICT. With that, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes 7-0. Mr. Clerk, please call the next item.
Councilmember Agenda. Councilmember Appointments and Comments.
I will begin with appointments and then comments, actually, before that, Councilmember Agenda. I do have one item that's not on the agenda, but I did bring it up during this last item. I just wanted to say thank you to those who attended last week's town hall between the city of Wichita, Cedric County, and USD 259. I wanted to thank Chairman Beatty and President of School Board Diane Albert for coming here to these chambers to have an open discussion moderated by the Kansas Leadership Center. It was a great opportunity to share ideas and talk about priorities. And their, the Kansas Leadership Center is still gathering all that information that was captured in the two-hour meeting. So once that is available, I would like to have an agenda item just to go over what had occurred. Again, it was a reimagined way to do a town hall, which was very productive and it allowed individuals to start off with their ideas. And then from their ideas, they had to share with a partner. And then from the partner, they shared with a group and then to the greater group. So I thought that that was very productive and I appreciated that. And so again, Kansas Leadership Center is still gathering all that data and we will have that back at some point. And then this, the next step would be to actually talk about what occurred last Wednesday. So I just wanted to mention that during Councilmember Agenda. With that, we will have Councilmember Appointments at this time. I have appointments and I will read them. I would like to approve for the Cedric County Wichita Addiction Intervention Coalition, Councilmember Mike Hoheisel. I would also like to appoint to the Wichita Airport Advisory Board, Bob Raspberry, nominated by Commissioner Pete Meitzner. I see none, so I will move to approve these appointments. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes 7, 7-0, 7-0. Now we will move to Councilmember Comments. Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the appointment. I hope to serve well and honorably and do a good job on our behalf and the behalf of the community. It is a deeply personal issue with me, so I do appreciate that. Two other things real quick. Clap Park, the opening was great. If you have not been down there to check it out, please do. You, you won't believe it until you see it and see all the kids out there. I've been going by daily and the parking lot is full every single time and a ton of kids out there playing. We did have the flood the day before and there was quite a bit of cleanup to do. And Councilmember Glasscock has reached out to a community group to actually help. So tomorrow and Thursday, they will be out during the day doing the cleanup, helping with some of the cleanup around the bridges. So I appreciate this group. They've done a couple of cleanups for us before in the community. So if you're not doing anything, grab a trash bag, grab some gloves, we're going to go out there and clean up around the trails and the bridges. The second thing I do have real quick is this Saturday, we will be having Cedric County Commissioner Jim Howell as our guest at the District 3 breakfast. But the location is still up in the air. Come to find out, our usual location is double booked, so we are currently putting that out there, but we will get that information out as soon as we can. So I appreciate the offers and going to other districts, we'll consider that, but we'll try and find something down home first. Thank you.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. I wanted to shout out Steve Dixon with Second Light coming to the District 1 breakfast on Saturday. Great discussion, great presentation, but also some heartbreaking stories that we heard from some folks in attendance that just continue to highlight the necessary work systemically to do, not just with Second Light, but all over and some of the challenges faced out there with federal funds and restrictions and, and all of that. So appreciated him coming out, great discussion, but definitely a lot more work to do throughout the community. And I just wanted to highlight the documenters in the audience, went to their celebration of all the work that they're doing in the meetings that they sit through, and they actually were sitting through some of our 10-hour meetings. So appreciate your service and what you're doing to get information out to the community.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd be remiss if I did not also give a great big shout out and thank you to our Public Works Department. They got out there four hours early, the crack of dawn, on the day of the ribbon cutting to help with the cleanup. The playground looked great, all the area around there looked great. They really put their work in, so I want to make sure to give them a shout out too because I really appreciate it. A lot of times they're the unsung heroes of just daily maintenance and just the daily life around Wichita. So big thank you to Public Works.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Councilmember Hoheisel reminded me that we should also thank, one week ago, Fire Department was out pulling people out of water in the newly formed rivers throughout the city. They did an incredible job and were all over, saw pictures of them in different spaces and did some great work around Blackley and some of the other flooding areas. So definitely appreciate their service. And I was talking to a member of the department who kind of joked that they don't always get to use their water skills. They have a lot of them, but they all did last Tuesday. So appreciate the work that they did for our community.
Again, thank you, Councilmembers. One last one, I just wanted to say thank you to the thousands of volunteers who made River Festival possible this, these last nine days for Riverfest 2025. I'm very appreciative, and again, full disclosure, I was a schooner mate back in 2002, and that's why I believe that this festival does bring community together because I've seen it firsthand from being a young teenager to now being the mayor of the city. And I'm so grateful to have seen the entire council at the start of Riverfest through the parade. I got to see Vice Mayor JV Johnston with his wife enjoying Fiesta del Rio night and many others. And so thank you again for making Wichita Riverfest possible. I do want to say a special shout out, though, to our first responders, police, fire, and EMS, all did a great job in making sure that everyone was safe and look forward to next year's Riverfest. But with that, I cannot end this meeting, I'm sorry. We have executive session, I know. I wanted to end on a positive note, so there will be two motions. And so I will begin right now with reading the first one. I move that the city council recess into executive session for 20 minutes to receive information on contractual issues pursuant to KSA 75-4319B2 for legal consultation with the city attorney, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship with potential litigation and legal advice. The executive session is required to protect attorney-client privilege and the public interest. The executive session will begin after this meeting and will resume thereafter. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes 7-0. I also move that the city council recess into executive session for 10 minutes to receive information on civil actions pursuant to KSA 75-4319B2 for legal consultation with the city attorney, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship, pending litigation and legal advice. Sorry, I'm not done. This executive session is required to protect attorney-client privilege and the public interest. The executive session, again, will begin after this meeting. Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Mayor.
Oh, you need times.
Yeah, we, yeah, we need times, at least on one of the motions that we will return from both executive sessions.
Okay, we will both, we will return from both items, which, which is 30 minutes in length. We will take a five-minute short break, so 12:15, 30 minutes, 12:45 is when we will return.
Perfect, thank you.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes 7-0. We will return at 12:45. Thank you.